Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are back. We are calling calendar numbers four seventy-five dash twenty-two dash Z and four seventy-six dash twenty-two dash Z. This is eighteen thirty-nine North Levitt. If you are here in support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Chairman, we should have two witnesses, Kevin Price and Steve Plazek, our project architect.
Yes, I think we've got them both. Kevin, could you state your name and address, please?
Kevin Price, eighteen thirty-nine North Levitt Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Steven Plazak, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Steven Plazak. Offices are at forty forty-three North Ravenswood, Suite two oh seven, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one three.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Fatikas, you have no objectors, so you can do the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Great, thank you. So again, Nick Fatikas, for the record, I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Kevin and Rachel Price. The applicants own the subject property at eighteen thirty-nine North Levitt. The zoning lot measures forty-eight feet wide by only a hundred feet deep, and it's improved with a two-story, single-family home that the applicants currently live in. In June of twenty twenty-one, the applicants obtained variations from the board to permit the bulk of the design that's currently under construction at the property today. For the record, those were variation calendar numbers two forty-nine twenty-one Z and two fifty twenty-one Z in copies of the resolutions were submitted with our findings of fact. During construction, which again is still ongoing, the applicants explored a design change that would incorporate a room addition at the rear of the home's second floor. The change would provide direct access from the home to the roof deck proposed above the attached garage at the rear of the lot. We submitted several existing condition photos with our findings, and one of them was actually a massing exhibit. If we could maybe, Jeanette, if you could scroll to it, keep going. Keep, there you go. So there's a massing exhibit showing where the new building element would be located. But because this is a new building element, a new variation set is required to permit it. The applicants are back before the board today seeking variations to reduce the north side setback, the combined side setback total, the rear setback, and relocate open space to the roof deck proposed above the attached garage, again, as you can see at the rear of the lot. And I'd point out for the record that the relief being sought today is identical to the relief that was sought and obtained in June of twenty twenty-one. Again, the only change being proposed is to the rear of the home's second floor, shown in that blue area, greenish-blue area in the exhibit that's on display right now. So the home's footprint and the attached garage footprint will remain exactly as they are today. Again, my two witnesses are on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Kevin Price, and Steve Plazek, our project architect. And with that, Kevin, again, you and your wife Rachel own the property at eighteen thirty-nine North Levitt?
Yes.
You purchased the house, I'm sorry, you purchased the property about four years ago and you've lived in the home ever since?
Yes.
And as I stated during construction of the current renovation and addition project, you explored a design change to provide direct access from the rear of the second floor to the roof deck above the garage, also at the rear of the property. Is that right?
Yes.
And in order to permit that new feature, you're proposing, or you're required to obtain variations that are actually identical to the variations we obtained originally back in twenty twenty-one. Is that right?
Yes.
And Kevin, before we conclude your testimony, is it true that you've met with both of your immediate neighbors to review the design change and explain the need for variations?
Yes.
And at this point, again, you have a good relationship with both of your neighbors and you're not aware of any pending objection or concern with the revised scope. Is that right?
Yes.
Kevin, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we've previously provided?
Yes.
Great. Steve, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you designed the originally proposed home renovation and addition addition project at the subject property. Is that right?
That is correct.
And then you also designed the proposed addition that the subject, that's the subject of today's hearing. Is that right?
Yes.
And again, in order to permit your design, variations are needed because of the existing legal non-conforming bu- foot building footprint as well as the substandard hundred-foot lot depth dimension. Is that right?
Yes.
And taken together, those are the existing conditions that the variations are intended to overcome, right?
Correct.
To be clear, though, as I stated, the proposed addition will follow the existing building wall lines. Is that right?
That is correct.
And other than extending the rear of the home's second floor, the project remains consistent with the scope that was reviewed and approved by the board back in twenty twenty-one, right?
Correct.
And you believe even with this addition and this design change, the resulting home will remain consistent and compatible with the other homes and residential buildings in the immediate neighborhood?
Yes, I do.
And Steve, is your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify with that testimony, be consistent with the written statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Great. Chairman, again, that was an attempt at a short condensed script. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the revision.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Can you just briefly describe what compelled the decision to change the design? What, you know, did something happen?
No, I, I'll, I'll let Steve fill in, but I think generally speaking, when the, the plan was laid out and when work began, it was almost a bit of an afterthought to say, wait, this is an opportunity to provide that direct access from the home's second floor. And I want to be clear, the, the work that's being proposed today has not started. The only scope of work was what was previously approved by the board and what's already been permitted. And I think it was just a design change to make it a little bit more functional and still follow the building footprint underneath. And Steve or Kevin, if you want to supplement that answer, please feel free to go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, Nick said it correctly, but effectively, once the homeowners were up on the space during construction of the previously approved plans, they just realized that this would add a bunch of function for their family while still maintaining all of the, you know, original draws of the initial design. I think one of the things, if I may speak for, for Kevin, one of the things that they noticed in that space, there was always a penthouse even from before they owned this property that led to the garage roof deck. But there is a bedroom at the back of the house before this proposed addition that would, you know, potentially have a detriment in terms of noise and things that are happening on that deck. So by having this addition, they were able to create family space and then they could relocate the bedroom windows to the much more open side of the property that actually had much more light from the south facade.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is four seventy-seven dash twenty-two dash Z and four seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash Z. This is seventeen fourteen West Beach.
And Chairman, on this, we should have two witnesses, Corey Faulkner on behalf of the applicant, and then Ramil Canown, the project architect.
Okay, let's see.
I see Ramil, I don't know if.
Yeah, we've got Corey as well, and if you are here in support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Corey, could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Corey Faulkner, seventeen fourteen West Beach Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Ramil has already been sworn in today, so for the record, he's been sworn in. You have no objectors, Counselor Fatikas, so you can proceed with the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Great, thank you. So again, Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Corey Faulkner and Melissa Sweets. The applicants own the subject property at seventeen fourteen West Beach. The subject property measures twenty-four feet wide by only a hundred feet deep, and it's improved with a two-story, single-family home that the applicants have lived in for the last ten years. Corey and Melissa are now proposing to construct the third floor and rear addition to their home as well as an attached two-car garage at the rear of the lot. The issue is that the existing home was originally constructed favoring the east side of the lot. And again, that lot is substandard with respect to both width and depth. So in order to permit the additions, again, so that they align with the existing building walls, the applicants are seeking variations to reduce the east side setback, the combined side setback total, the rear setback, and relocate open space to the roof deck proposed above the attached garage that would be located again at the rear of the lot. My two witnesses are the applicant, Mr. Corey Faulkner, and our project architect, Mr. Ramil Canown. And with that, I would ask Corey, again, Corey, you and your wife Melissa own the subject property at seventeen fourteen West Beach?
Yes.
The lot itself measures twenty-four feet wide by only a hundred feet deep?
Yes.
And as I stated, it's improved with the two-story, single-family home, which you've lived in since about twenty twelve. Is that right?
That's correct.
And you're now proposing a third floor, a rear addition, and a new attached garage at the, the rear of the lot. Is that right?
That's correct.
And in order to permit the additions so that they align with the existing home's footprint, variations are required, right?
Yes.
And we'll get into the specifics of the variations with the architect, but is it true that as part of this process, you've met with several of your immediate neighbors to review the building plans for your project?
Yes.
And we've provided the board with five letters or emails in support of our, our design. Is that right?
Yes.
And you also worked directly with Alderman Hopkins Office and secured a zoning change to allow this specific design to proceed to the board today. Is that right?
Yes.
And through that process, Corey, we, we were not made aware of any objection or concern by any neighboring property owner in your, in your area. Is that right?
That's right. I'm not aware of any objections.
And Corey, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we've provided?
Yes.
Ramil, you designed the proposed home additions at the subject property?
That's correct.
And in order to permit the design, and again, so that it follows the existing building wall lines, variations are needed because of the existing non-conforming building footprint and the fact that it's a substandard zoning lot, right?
That's correct.
Taken together, the, those conditions, the existing conditions, and the substandard lot are the hardships the variations are intended to overcome. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, respect to the side setback, without being redundant, it lets you follow that building wall straight back?
Yes.
And with respect to the rear setback, again, it allows the rear of the home to follow the same setback on the, the other side. Is that right?
That is accurate.
And relocating the rear and open spaces is the only practical option we have to meet the open space requirement given our substandard zoning lot dimensions. Is that right?
That is correct as well.
Still, though, you believe the resulting three-story home with an attached garage will be consistent, compatible with the neighboring residential buildings in the subject area. Is that right?
Yes, it will.
And Ramil, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the written statements we've provided. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our, our project.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We will take this matter under advisement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is four seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash Z. This is thirty-five forty-four South Union. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Do you have two or three witnesses for this one, Counselor?
I believe two, Jennifer, who I see on the screen, as well as Alan Lasky, our project architect.
Great, we've got them both. Jennifer, could you state your name and address, please?
Jennifer Alvarez, three three one eight South Wallace Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one six.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And Alan, could you state your name and address, please?
Alan Lasky, office at seventeen zero one South First Avenue, Maywood, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Counselor Fatikas, you have no objectors. You can proceed with the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Great, thank you. So again, Nick Fatikas, for the record, I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the applicants, Rochelle and Jennifer Alvarez. The applicants own the subject property at thirty-five forty-four South Union Avenue. The subject property measures twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and twenty-three point six seven feet deep, and it's improved with a two-story, two-unit residential building. Jennifer and Rochelle are proposing an extensive renovation of the existing building, and as part of their plan, they're also proposing to construct a new third floor addition and rebuild the addition at the rear of the building. With respect to the rear addition, the subject, the survey itself shows or describes that segment or portion of the building. Beyond the substandard lot dimensions, the practical issue is that the existing structure favors the north side of the subject property, and you can also see that from the survey. So in order to permit the addition, so they align with the existing building walls, the applicants are seeking variations to reduce the required north side setback and the combined side setback total. Jennifer and Alan are my two witnesses, and I can start with Jennifer now. Jennifer, again, you and your husband own the property at thirty-five forty-four South Union?
Yes.
As I explained in my introduction, the subject lot measures twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and twenty-three point six seven feet deep?
Yes.
And it's improved with a two-story, two-unit building, right?
Yes.
And while most of the building is structurally sound, the units themselves are in need of extensive renovations and updating. Is that fair?
Yes.
Now, as part of your program, you're also proposing to construct a new third floor addition and rebuild the rear addition off the back of the buildings, off the rear of the building, right?
Yes.
And in order to, to permit that work, so again, it all aligns with the existing building footprint, variations are, are required.
Yes.
And provided the board approves the relief, your plan is to move into one of the units and rent the other unit on the open market?
Yes.
And you've provided the board with a summary of your projected costs and anticipated return for the project. Is that right?
Yes.
And Jennifer, before we conclude, is it also true that you did meet with several of your immediate neighbors to review your plans for the, the property?
Yes.
And based on that outreach, you're not aware of any objection or concerns raised for, for the property?
That is correct. I'm not aware of any concerns.
And is it also your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify with that testimony, be consistent with the statements we've provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Alan, again, you designed the proposed renovation and addition project for the subject property?
Yes, I did.
And in order to permit the design so that all the new work follows and aligns with the existing building walls, variations are required, right?
Yes.
And that's really because the existing non-conforming building footprint, which favors the north side of the lot and the substandard zoning lot dimensions, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Taken together, those are the practical hardships or a lot, particular hardships or practical difficulties the zoning relief is intended to overcome, right?
Yes.
Still, though, the proposed north side and combined side setback dimensions will match the existing north side and combined side setback dimensions on the lot today.
Yes.
And provided the board approves the relief, you believe the resulting three-story, two-flat will be consistent and compatible with the other residential buildings on the block. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Alan, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
I do understand.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the written statements we've provided?
Of course I will.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes our condensed presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our project.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is calendar number four eighty dash twenty-two dash S. This is sixty-nine oh five South State. If you're here in support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. You have three witnesses for this one, Counselor?
Yes, I should have three witnesses. Ahmed Motion, Damian Bavizik, who I see on, as well as Terry O'Brien, who I also see on the screen.
Yes, I think we have all of them. And again, if you're here in support or objection of four eighty dash twenty-two dash S, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Let me get your witnesses sworn in. And let's start with Ahmed. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Ahmed Molson, ninety-one forty-eight South Falcon Ridge, Bridgeview, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you. Damian, can you state your name and address, please?
Damian Babitz, thirteen oh two South Fifth Avenue, Des Moines, Illinois, six zero zero one eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Terrence O'Brien has already been sworn in and his expertise has been recognized. Let me go ahead and read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. Okay, this is the recommendation for calendar number four eighty dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with twelve fueling pumps in a three thousand square feet retail building provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, sixty-nine oh one Prop LTD, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and documents dated September seventh, twenty twenty-two, prepared by BAU Design and Development. You do not have any objectors here, Counselor Fatikas, so you can proceed with the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Great, I'll try and do a little, there was a little bit of background, so I'll try and work that into the applicant's testimony.
Please, please do. We, we have a couple of.
Please, Counselor, do that, because I, I, I was under assumption there was some opposition. So obviously, you worked it out, which I always like to see, but go a little bit deeper than just the short, not much deeper, just a little deeper, all right? I know you know me, Nick, so you know, you know how my brain works. Thank you.
I got it. There's a couple of letters in the file that, that I'd like you to, to address.
Right. So again, Nick Fatikas, for the record, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, sixty-nine oh one Prop LTD. The applicant has a lease for the subject property at sixty-nine oh five South State Street. The subject site contains twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet of total lot area, and it's currently unimproved and vacant. The lot itself is located immediately east of the Deion Ryan Expressway at the intersection of Sixty-Ninth Street and South State Street. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new twelve-pump, six-island gas station and a one-story retail convenience store building. In order to permit the project, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a C-two dash two zoning district. Again, I have three witnesses available to testify. Ahmed Motion, on behalf of the applicant, Damian Bavizik, I'm, behalf of our project architect, and Terrence O'Brien are designated MAI appraiser. And with that, I can start my question with Ahmed. Ahmed, you are the president of the applicant, sixty-nine oh one Prop LTD?
Yes.
And that entity has a lease for the subject property, again, at sixty-nine oh five South State Street. Is that right?
Yes.
As I explained in my introduction, you are planning to develop the currently vacant lot with a new gas station and retail convenience store?
Yes.
And the proposed station would have six pumping islands with a total of twelve gas pumps, a three thousand square foot retail building, and off-street parking for ten cars. Is that right?
Yes.
Your plan also incorporates code-compliant landscaping, outdoor lighting, and perimeter fencing, correct?
Correct.
Now, in terms of your hours of operation, the gas station will be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes.
And the retail store will, will maintain similar hours, but access into the store will be limited overnight for security reasons. Is that correct? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to site security, your program incorporates surveillance cameras to capture not only your customer traffic onsite and in the convenience store, but also the public areas on South State Street and on Sixty-Ninth Street, right?
Yes.
And those cameras will operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of whether the gas station is open, right? And based on your commitment to the Park Manor Neighborhood Association, you intend to link your camera system to the city's OEMC network, right?
Yes.
You've also agreed to provide at least one security officer during the evening hours?
Yes.
And you're open to extending those hours or even, even adding a second security guard should the need present itself. Is that right?
Yes.
And the guards, and those guards would actually be in addition to the typical employee count, which is anywhere between two and three at any given time at the store, correct?
Yes.
And Ahmed, before we conclude your testimony, is it true that you did start your review process with Alderman Sawyer?
Yes.
And again, you met with the president of the Park Manor Neighborhood Association, as well as several neighbors who live or own property immediately east of you in the residential neighborhood to the east of the site. Is that right?
Yes.
And through that process, it's your opinion that you were able to describe your experience in the industry and explain your operational and security plans for this specific location, right?
Yes.
And to address concerns. And to address concerns separate from the security component, there were concerns raised about access to food in the neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
And your response was to provide what we're calling a little bit more robust food option, which would include dairy products, fresh produce, frozen foods, and additional grocery items in your three thousand square foot convenience store, correct?
Yes.
So again, a little bit more than what you'd see in a typical gas station setup, right?
Yes.
And in the end, Ahmed, you believe you were able to alleviate many concerns raised by your by your neighbors and actually gain support from the folks that you met with, correct?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that my office, after that, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Damian, Chairman, this is a special use application. I don't want to go in depth with the architect unless the board feels it's necessary. Can I just maybe do like a couple of quick questions with him?
That's fine.
Okay, so Damian, you designed the site program for the proposed gas station and convenience store at the subject property?
Yes.
And as part of that process, we worked directly with the Department of Planning and Development to provide one point of ingress from South State Street and one point of egress, ingress and egress along East Sixty-Ninth Street, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And that also incorporates and works around the necessary landscaping and building improvement areas that you've laid out on your plan, correct?
Yes, correct.
And based on those comments and based on our response, you believe that the proposed plan will operate in a safe and efficient manner, is that right?
Yes, I do.
Great. And Terry, my last witness, you were previously sworn in. The scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right? Terry, I think you're still on mute.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
And you did physically inspect the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, I did it in April, then again, just this past week.
And you prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions in the case, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And it's your understanding my office has submitted a copy of your written report to the board already, right?
That is correct. I just want to make one correction. Within my report, page number two, I said six gas pumps. It should have been twelve, it's my fault type of error.
Terry, not to belabor it, I made the same mistake. It's twelve actual pumps, but six islands. And that's reflected on the plan that's-
Actually, I got three islands.
Three islands, but a total of six, six?
Six, they double up, so there is twelve pumps.
That's it. And Terry, again, with respect to the special use standards, you believe that all of the approval criteria are being met?
Yes, I do, and I address the criteria within my report.
And again, we'd be able to answer any questions specific to the criteria if asked by the board, right?
Yes, and I would just like to emphasize that the current zoning of the property is for motor-related uses. And certainly, I believe, again, the service station does fall within that category.
And on top of that, it's immediately adjacent to the Dan Ryan Expressway, right?
That is correct.
And Terry, again, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. Again, I hope we were able to address some of the community process that was involved. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Yeah, I have a question, and I'll just kind of pose it. It's, because we did have a couple of letters in the, in the file with the concern of pedestrian safety with regard to the curb cuts. Could you maybe speak to that a little bit?
So one of the things that I can speak to as part of the review process with DPD was making sure that our driveways were, if you can see from the site plan that's up right now, were spaced out as far away as possible from the intersection at Sixty-Ninth and South State Street. And that was a concern that was raised, not only by a handful of neighbors, but also the planning department. And the solution was the plan that's being presented to the board today. I'd also point out that State Street, because of the expressway, this State Street frontage is a one-way street going north. So it's a little bit easier to control the traffic and patterns on that street. Sixty-Ninth Street presented a little bit of a challenge, but we were able to design, again, a curb cut that's far away from the intersection and won't interfere with traffic patterns on Sixty-Ninth Street, separate from State Street or the intersection.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Chairman, that's the last you're going to hear from me. Happy holidays and thank you for your patience today.
Happy holidays. We'll see you next year.
Happy holidays, Nick.
Bye, guys.
Right. Next up is four eighty-one dash twenty-two dash Z. This is twenty-one twenty-two West Pratt Boulevard. If you're here in support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Meg George. Can you see me or hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you, but hearing you is good enough.
Well, we'll take that for right now. So I am an attorney with the law firm of Acraman LLP. I am here today on behalf of the applicants, Ann Gar and Paul Kramer, in connection with their application for a variation for the property located at twenty-one twenty-two West Pratt Boulevard. The applicant seeks a variation to reduce the east setback from the required six-point-two-five feet to five-point-two-eight feet. The applicants have owned this eighty-five-year-old home for several years, and they would like to expand their space so they can continue to live in and enjoy their home. The applicant is an architect and has thoughtfully designed this addition, so it maintains the historic character of the house. The reduced setback is also found on several lots on the same block.
Counselor, before you continue, where is the applicant?
Oh, is he not?
I don't see, I have Ann Gar and Paul Kramer as your witnesses for this one?
Yes.
I do not see either of them.
Oh, Vic or Jeanette, do you see them waiting?
This is Vicar. I don't see them on the list.
I apologize. Let me see if I can call on a cell phone really quickly. I'm sorry, he's sorry, I'm on the phone now. He's logged in, but it's not-
Person who's related to the case, if they can raise their hand in Zoom, we can promote them.
Yeah, try that. He's going to log out and log back in.
Okay.
I apologize. Would you like me to wait for him to get back on or continue with just the lead-up, the summary?
Let's make sure we've got him.
Sure.
We have someone from the Alderman of the Twenty-Fifth Ward's office. But this isn't Twenty-Fifth Ward, is it?
No, it's the Fiftieth.
Sorry, Chairman, Ruben Franco with the Twenty-Fifth Ward. I just thought it opportune in the interim to ask if I can give a comment for an earlier case?
For an earlier case?
Yes, for the Twenty-Fifth Ward, I believe, four-five-eight-two-two dash S.
We already voted on that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we neglected the notice and I wasn't able to log on this morning. I apologize.
Yeah, we voted to approve that one.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep.
Have a good holiday, all. Apologies.
You too. Okay, let's see here. Yeah, so I'm not seeing Ann or Paul.
Ann Richmond, same as Ann Gar, or is that a different person?
I think, I think that's a different person.
So Paul Kramer just joined that promotion.
Oh, good, okay, great.
He has to accept the promotion. Mr. Paul Kramer, you're seeing a prompt from Zoom. You have to accept that. So you can be able to speak then. Okay, here we go.
Hello?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Would you like me to continue or?
Do we need Ann as well?
They're a married couple that own the home, so-
Okay, great. Let me get, let me get Paul sworn in. Paul, can you state your name and address, please? Oh, you're muted, Paul.
I have a feeling he's not able to hear us.
Paul? Oh. You unmuted for a second, but then you went back to muted. Now you're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I apologize for the hassle here. I don't know why it was so difficult, but can you hear me?
We can. Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Kramer. My address is twenty-one twenty-two West Pratt Boulevard.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you. So as I was saying, the applicant, Paul, who just joined, is an architect and has thoughtfully designed this addition so that it maintains the historic character of the structure. This reduced setback is also found on several lots on the same block. Present with me is Mr. Paul Kramer, and as I mentioned, he is the architect of the project and can also present in his expert capacity. The applicants have obtained two support letters from the owners on either side of the property, which have been tendered to the staff. Mr. Kramer has prepared and executed an affidavit that we have prepared and submitted along with the findings of fact outlining the details of this case. Mr. Kramer, please state your name for the board.
Paul Kramer.
And do you own the home that is the subject of this case?
I do.
Thank you. And if called to testify, would you testify in accordance with the affidavit you provided to this body?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our short form. I'm happy to go into more detail or answer any questions you may have.
I think maybe if we could go into a little bit of the hardship and why the location that you've chosen the addition, why that's where it needs to be.
Paul, can you describe why you placed it here?
I can, yes. And I don't know who's controlling the photographs, but if you, if you that's the rear of the house. You can see that. To the left is the side yard setback at issue. What we want to do is build the addition so that it aligns with the existing east facade of the house. We think that's an important detail because we've worked hard to match the brick. We're using the same Flemish bond pattern that you see in the masonry with limestone sills and other details. We think that would be an important relationship to make the whole cohesive. Additionally, it would allow the interior to work and flow in the same manner, to maintain the same clear width of the existing living room. So that's the kind of architectural consideration that drove the decision to align it and blend the building with the addition.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Have a good holiday.
You too. Next up, calendar number four eighty-two dash twenty-two dash Z. This is eighty-seven twenty South May. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Tom Moore, on behalf of the applicant. And we should have Raymond Raymond Young and his architect, John Pimentel.
Yes, I think we have both of, well, let's see here. Thought I saw both of them. See John? And I saw I saw Raymond, but now I can't find him. Oh, curious. Dr. Ray Young? If you could unmute? And if you could state your name and address, please?
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I'm actually still at work. My name is Raymond Young and my physical address is eight-five-nine thirty-four seven U. But the property record of interest today is eighty-seven twenty South May.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And John, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure. John Pimentel. The address of the firm is nine-six-five West Chicago in Chicago, Illinois, six-oh-six-four-two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Moore, you have no objectors, so you can go with the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Thank you very much. Dr. Young, you bought this two-flat with the idea of renovating it and it was building that was down in its heels and old and hadn't been maintained and was vacant and you wanted to renovate it and make it into a viable light-new two-flat, is that right? Dr. Young, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, I had to turn on the speaker. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you hired the architect who will speak in a minute and he, they told you that when they submitted the plans that it came to their attention that there was an addition in the back that had never been properly permitted and that as a part of this process, they would have to get that permitted as if it wasn't there, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And so you gave them the authority to do that and what came out of that is we need one single variance to allow that allows up to fifteen percent to encourage people to renovate older buildings. And in order to permit this addition, which was never properly permitted as a part of your renovation, we're asking that the board support this variance. We only actually need three-point-eight percent additional floor area in order to legitimize this existing addition, is that right? Is that your understanding?
Yes, that is correct, to my understanding.
Okay, and you and I worked out a an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variance we're requesting. And if you were to continue to testify, you- Uh, the variants we're requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
That is right.
Um, John, uh, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, and your firm, uh, routinely does this kind of renovations and submits for permit, is that right?
That's correct.
And what happened when you did this, when you submitted for this one?
Uh, the zoning department came back and told us that this addition was, uh, a structure that was built without a permit at one point or another. And in order for us to have, uh, the renovation done, we needed to fix that issue, um, and have it submitted. Uh, to, to the zoning as a brand-new structure.
And the, um. The, the variance allows up to fifteen percent and you only need about three-point-eight percent.
That is correct.
Okay, and you and I, uh, worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. If you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. Both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Who, um? Who built the, uh, the rear addition that was not permitted? Was that the applicant?
No, no, no. Well, yeah, okay, uh, Dr. Um, Young. Uh, when did you buy this building?
Ooh, uh, I can't recall. I think it's been five years since, um, G C Realty took over the management. And then prior to that, I think, to my recollection, three, maybe. About three years before that I've owned it, so, uh, all in all, about eight, seven years of my memory serves most.
So the chairman, was, was this, um. Addition there when you bought the building?
Uh, the question is, was the addition there?
Yes.
Uh, to be honest, I don't really recall because I haven't actually seen it myself.
You haven't been to the property yourself, you're saying?
Hmm, no, I have not.
Okay. The, the, here, here's the, the question is, you didn't build that, that wa, that wasn't something you built, right?
Hmm, not, no, I don't think, I don't recall anything to, to the fact of that.
Uh, e, excuse me, I mean, don't it, building a rear addition to a home, isn't that something you would recall?
Um, I never approved of any addition to it, so if it was there, it was likely, so this was purchased under a. A turnkey rehab, so everything was built prior to me acquiring it. I, I never approved of anything after that.
So. Um. If an addition was put on there. It was put on there before you owned it and without your knowledge, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes. So the turnkey concept is they build everything out so it's livable, everything's brand-new, supposed to. Allow for less of a deferred maintenance, at least for several years to come. The idea is that it's tenant-ready, everything's supposed to be perfect. I've hired inspectors and they. You know, prior to purchase, because I own out-of-state and at the time, everything seemed to check out minus, minor, you know, findings. Um, like it was more or less unremarkable, so to, to see this being an issue was a surprise.
Was the property already built when you bought it?
Yes.
Okay. Along with that rear addition?
Um. I want to say that it was like, um, because I, I never approved of anything big since I've owned it.
Okay.
You, you live in San Francisco, is that right?
I do.
And you did, bought this as an investment through a realtor on the south side of South Suburbs, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and, uh, you haven't actually been to the property, is that right?
Um, I have not.
So, um. It, it's unusual that, that you would not have any knowledge, but that's because you're an out-of-state investor and this property. Uh, you've had a management company running it in, uh, the entire time that you've owned it, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
This is Commissioner Esposito. Well, did you buy it without photos or information? This is confusing to me.
Yeah, I, I did buy it. I've seen photos. It just, it's just been a really long time. I just don't recall the exact. Details, but I. I mean, it wasn't like they, they sold it to me and they're like, hey, you're gonna need to ex, expend another slump sum of funds to. Either, uh. Make it livable. It was just, everything was already built out.
Including this addition or not?
Um, I can look back at the old, um. Property inspector report, but I want to say that it was already built out.
So, I, I mean, I just have to ask, how are you going to keep track of this property? Going forward, if you don't know. The timeline of its construction or its condition?
Um, uh, yeah, that, I, I am leaning on my property manager to, to keep me more up to date with these matters.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I'm not hearing you.
Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Good, thank you. All right. Next up is four eighty-three dash twenty-two dash Z. This is thirty-one, twenty-four North Levitt.
So, Mr. Chairman, we should have, um. Alpesh Amin and, uh, Laura Amin and their architect, Mike Ryan.
Yep, we've got all of them, and if you are here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Um. Alpesh, could you state your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Alpesh Amin. I reside at thirty-one, twenty-four North Levitt Street, Chicago, Illinois. Six-zero-six-one-eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Laura, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name's Laura Amin. Um, I reside at thirty-one, twenty-four North Levitt Street, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-one-eight. And I do.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, and Mike Ryan, could you state your name and address, please?
Um, Mike Ryan, um. Forty-five, thirty-five North Kenneth in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Moore, you have no objectors. You can proceed with the short form and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Thank you very much. Um, um, Alpesh, um, when did you and Laura buy this property?
We bought the property in February of twenty-twenty.
And, um. You, you, uh, were not around, but you heard that the property was built. Um. At or about the, uh, two thousand and eight crash and, um. Uh, for a time was, um, apparently the builder went broke and for a time it was, um. Uh, unoccupied or even had squatters in it, is that right?
That's correct.
And then, um, so now, when you bought it, um, uh, you are, uh. Uh, you've made it all livable and as one of the things you'd like to do to make it even more, uh, meet your needs is you'd like to add. Uh, uh, two, um. Accoutrements on the, both the, um. Garage roof deck and on the roof deck itself, is that right?
Correct. We would like to add a pergola on the garage roof deck and also a pergola on the top roof deck, uh, above the property.
Okay, and, um. The, as the architect will explain in a minute, when you went in for those two things, which don't even requ, require a variance. Um, the zoning department raised, uh, some issues that they said were not in full compliance. For instance, uh, that the garage, um, itself is not a full two feet off the. Um, the asphalt, i- it's only, um, one-point-four feet off the asphalt, is that right?
Uh, that's correct. That's my understanding is that when we went in, uh, for those permits and, you know, we went in obviously through our architect, uh, into our design firm. Uh, that some, uh, non-conforming conditions came back, uh, around the garage.
So our purpose today is to, uh, if the board grants, uh, the variance, um, it would be fully in compliance. And you could live happily ever after, is that right?
Correct.
And actually, we, um, gave a picture of the, th, this picture that's up now. To, when you were looking at the house, you wouldn't, I mean, you probably didn't even know it's supposed to be two feet off, but looking at that, you wouldn't know that it wasn't the full two feet off. Uh, is that right?
That's correct. I mean, we, ob, obviously, when we came in to buy the home, you know, we were accompanied by our, uh, real estate agent. Uh, uh, when we went to make an offer on the home, uh, we did it pursuant to an inspection. Uh, and also as part of the negotiation, the contract and the closing of contract, you know, we had a real estate attorney working with us. So to our knowledge and, you know, to the best of our ability, uh, you know, we made a bona fide offer on the home. Uh, you know, there were no red flags and we closed on the home and did not find out about, uh, these non-conforming conditions until. Uh, you know, after the fact, when we went to, uh, seek, uh, permits to build the pergolas.
Very well. And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant the bo, this. Uh, variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
That is correct.
And, uh, Laura, do you have anything you could add to that?
I would just, um. Support what Alpesh said about when we purchased the home. I've been in real estate for twenty years. Um, I would not have known to. Identify any, um, shortage of space, uh, to the alley, but, um, we. Liked the home, we purchased it and we trusted that the developer that we bought it from did everything that they needed to do to have it in compliance.
Okay, um. And then, uh, Mike Ryan, you, um. Were asked, uh, to file the application for the pergolas, is that right?
That's correct.
And no variances are needed for that, is that right?
Uh, that's correct. The new improvements under our permit application, uh, do not require variation, uh, just the existing non-conforming conditions do.
Okay, and so you looked into the history of it and you did a FOIA and you got all the old plans. And the old, the old permit and, um. The zoning board, uh, variance that was granted in two thousand and six, is that right?
That's correct. Uh, the, the project was permitted and then, uh, a revision of the permit was sought to seek a variation. The variation was for the breezeway connection, uh, from the principal building to the accessory. And, uh, really, the only thing that's different. From what was approved in that variation is that it was actually built a little closer to the alley than was shown on that approved plans previously.
So, so that, um, other than the alley, everything else has been previously been permitted. Is that right?
That's correct.
Um, and you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant. Uh, this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. Both, all three of these people are available for, um, questions, should the board have any?
Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We will take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And next up is four eighty-four dash twenty-two dash Z. This is forty-two, twenty-four North Hermitage. If you are here in support or objection of this matter. Please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Takarsky. And, uh, this afternoon, I represent Mark Tovar. Who is the, uh, property owner, along with his wife, of, of forty-two, twenty-four North Hermitage. Uh, I have with me Mark and Brooke, uh, as well as, uh, our, uh, architect. Uh, Leanne Houston's.
Let me get your, uh, witnesses sworn in. Uh, Mark, could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Mark Tovar, M R C, T O V A R, forty-two, twenty-four North Hermitage, Chicago, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And Brooke, uh, can I get your name and address as well?
Brooke Tovar, four-two-two-four North.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And, uh, Leanne has already, um. Been sworn in today.
Great. Uh, simply put, uh, we are seeking to place an addition to the rear of the subject site. Following the existing building lines. I think that's about as simply put as you can get. The property in question is owned RS three. And the variations that we are seeking, uh, is for a north side yard, uh, from the required, uh, two feet to one foot. And a decrease in the required combined side yard setbacks from five feet to two-point, uh, eight-three feet. This is an existing condition, uh, as far as the, uh, the current home is, and we, uh, hope to follow the existing building lines. Uh, and of course, to not do so would be, uh, economically, uh, and architecturally, uh, devastating. This is a very interesting neighborhood. Um, it's, uh, uh. Filled practically with, uh, all Victorian and Quinn, Queen Anne-type houses. As you can see by the, um, photographs that I, uh, furnished. Uh, each one of these houses seems to have an awful lot of gingerbread on it. And a different coloring and variations. Uh, and some interesting characters live there too, including our, uh, former mayor. Uh, so, uh, I would, uh. Indicate that, uh, the lot in question is twenty-five by one. Everybody's got it, uh, by one sixty-five, uh, for forty, forty-one-hundred-and-fourteen square feet. The, uh, property in question was purchased by, uh, the Tovars. In two thousand and eighteen for eight-hundred-thousand dollars. The proposed construction will be about six-hundred-thousand dollars. And the value, uh, although it's not, uh, consequential in this particular case, since the Tovars intend to live there. Will be about a million-three when we get done. Um. With that, uh, I would call, uh, Mark. Please state your name, address. Hello?
Yeah, Mark Tovar.
And your address, sir?
Forty-two, twenty-four North Hermitage Avenue.
Okay, and how long have you lived at the subject site?
It's been about four years.
Okay, and you're seeking to place an addition, uh, to the rear of your, uh, property, uh, because, uh, you need more, uh, family space, is that correct?
Correct.
In fact, there's only one bathroom and you have four people in your house at this point.
Yes, two daughters.
And, and you have, uh, two children, uh, who, uh, are seeking their own, uh, private space, is that correct?
Correct.
Um. I have prepared an affidavit on your he, behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, are your answers, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
Right, I have no further questions of Mark, Mark? Right, I have no further questions of Mark, Mark. Okay, Leanne, uh, please state your name, address and occupation.
Leanne Houston's nine forty-nine North Woolcott, Chicago, six oh six two-two, and I am a licensed architect.
And you're the project architect for the subject site, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it true that the proposed uh three-story addition uh including the basement and the two upper floors? Uh, as well as the attic, um, are are built, being built uh following the existing building lines, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, uh, to not follow the existing building lines. Would cause uh significant architectural difficulties, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Now, I have prepared on your behalf an affidavit, uh, which you have signed, is that correct?
Yes.
If I ask you the same questions concerning the criteria necessary for variations, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes, the same.
Right, I have nothing further.
Okay, um, I have a question. Uh, in the um, in the findings effect, it says that the. Predecessor contractor of the applicant created the hardship that exists and. Could someone explain that?
Well, I, I use that language because that's, that's how the house was built. Uh, whoever the contractor was way back when, built it with the existing uh side yards. Uh, the uh north side yard being uh one foot. And and uh the uh combined side yards being uh two point eight-three feet. Uh, nothing was done uh by my clients or anyone else.
Okay, I, that's what was confusing me because the, the, the sentence in the findings of facts is the predecessor contractor of the applicant. Created the hardship. And so that's what was confusing me. So the applicant did not create the hardship.
Uh, you're correct.
Okay, okay. All right, any uh other questions from the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito. Uh, I have a question for the architect. You've said that building off. The existing walls uh basically alleviates uh. Great difficulty architecturally. Can you describe the difficulties that would be posed? Building off the sidewalls?
Well, if we just like met the required side yard setback, there would be like a one foot. Uh, difference on one side and maybe I don't remember what the other side is. Um, and it's just not as fluid. For doing a floor plan, the stairs would be more towards the center going down into the basement and it just wouldn't flow as well.
So this allows for more interior space?
That's correct. We're not, and we're not exceeding the allowable floor area as the lot is a hundred and sixty-three feet deep. It's just that, yeah, I mean, it just architecturally, it's better just to align everything up than to have all these indentations. So also on the exterior, it would look more awkward and would become more maintenance, I would ima- imagine with all the ins and outs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to the continued cases. And starting with three seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash S. This is sixty-six seventeen South. That is quite a dog.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Tom Moore and I have, uh, I should have a Tim Lorimer and um Joe Ryan.
Okay, I see, I see Joe. Not seen Tim yet. And also, if you're here in support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Again, we're at three seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash S. This is sixty-six seventeen South Ashland. Okay, I do see Tim now. Tim, uh, if you could uh unmute and state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Chairman, hi, Board. Uh, Tim Lorimer, I reside at fifteen thirty South State Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And Joe Ryan has already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I will read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number three seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor. To allow for rehabilitation of existing two-story building containing four commercial units. And ten dwelling units, four on the ground floor, six on the second floor. With ten proposed parking spaces provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings. Did it October twenty, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by P M P C Architects.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, Tim, you're um. You develop uh older buildings, uh, you renovate them and then uh put uh. For use with over fifty-five people, uh, C H, uh, under a C H A program, is that right?
Uh, Counselor, let me stop you for a second. I, I've gotten Nancy has her hand raised, so uh Nancy, um. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I had gotten a um note. About maybe an hour and a half ago from Brandon Bradford from the Alderman's office. Um, indicating that, that they wanted to request another continuance. Um, I've advised Brandon that's, that, that he or someone from the Alderman's office would have to log in. I also did talk to Tom Moore and I know he reached out, but I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because that's, that's hanging out there. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I've, I've talked to Victor as well. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure where that stands right now. I don't know if um the attorney, Tom had, uh, Tom Moore had gotten into, in touch with them at all.
Yeah, C- Counselor, could you, um, thank you for that, Nancy. Uh, Counselor, could you, um. Uh, do you have any, anything further on that? Have you been in contact with the Alderman's office? Are they requesting a continuance?
Well, not that I know of. The only what, I only know what Nancy just said and, and. I immediately uh called the Alderman's office and asked to talk to the, either the Alderman or the Chief of Staff. But um, I will tell you that uh, the Alderman did, uh. Well, let's go back. I um, when we filed, right as I filed, I had three. Um, emails to the Alderman's office asking, could we come and show her the uh plans? And um, uh, got no response. I left also voicemail messages. I did get, I did get a response to my third email, which said that they would get back to me with a date to have a meeting. Uh, we were never, uh, my client also tried to make contact. We were never able before the first meeting here two months ago. To get a meeting, the Alderman was busy. Um, so uh then uh. After the case was continued for two months, um, I continued to ask, could we have a meeting? And last week, we did have a meeting and it started with a very stern uh scolding, uh, not, not just. Um, from uh my s- um, sending the plans, but that uh Tim had. Uh, bought the building many months before that and the scolding was that it uh. If you're gonna do anything in, in that ward, we should come and see the Alderman uh before we do anything. And uh, Tim was uh apologetic and contrite and uh told the Alderman lesson learned. And then we had a very nice session where we explained this project and we talked about a, when it's done, a ribbon cutting and. Uh, other properties that Tim might look at and try to do the same thing with, and it all ended very positive. So when Nancy called a couple, an hour and a half ago, I was very surprised that, that uh. Because when we left the meeting, it was very clear to all, to uh. Both Tim and he brought his contractor who grew up in the neighborhood and uh certainly to me, who has been in dozens of these kinds of meetings. That the Alderman was very supportive and very happy about the whole project. So uh, the idea that it, there be any need for another continuance uh is a total surprise to me. And I did reach out an hour and a half ago and I've heard nothing.
So as it stands right now, what we know is that the Alderman contacted D P D for a continuance. About an hour and a half ago. You know, um. I wanna see if um, if, if. The Alderman, I, I, we're gonna pass this case. I, I, I want you to call the Alderman again, see if you can get in touch with uh the Alderman's office. Oh, Nancy's raising her hand again.
I'm on hold right now.
Oh, okay, Nancy's making a call as well.
So I assume one call is enough, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, since Nancy's on the phone, no need for you to do it. All, all we need is some Jeopardy music.
Mr. Chairman, I just spoke to Brandon Bradford. He said he's logging on right now.
Okay. Okay, I can see we've got uh Brandon on from the uh sixteenth ward. Brandon, if you could uh unmute and uh state your name and role, please.
Good afternoon, Brandon Bradford, Chief of Staff, Sixty-four Service Office.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so we've been hearing that uh there may be a request for a continuance. Could you uh please let us know?
Yes, there is a request from the continuance. Um, the Alderman did have a meeting with Mr. Moore and his client. Um, but the Alderman would like to take a further look at some of the uh, the, the projects, the scope of the project before moving to Z B A.
And how much uh of a continuance is the Alderman asking for?
Just until the next uh Z B A meeting, so hopefully the uh January agenda.
Okay. Tom, do you wanna respond?
Well, I, I mean, I, uh, Tim Lorimer wants to get along with the Alderman and um, we uh wanna cooperate. Um, uh, you know, but we've already um been delayed two months and um. Uh, every. All the can, uh, while there weren't any concerns, I mean, it's a wonderful project. Um, I, I just, I haven't heard a reason. It, it just, it seems, and traditionally, the, the board always, of course, gives a courtesy to the Alderman for at least one continuance. But I don't understand the reason for this one.
Well, if I could rebuttal, have a rebuttal?
Go ahead.
So this is, the, this plan has been in place for over a year. I believe the arc, the building was sold last year to the client. Um, he had archi- architectural plans done in January and this building has been having work done. Um, for the past year with no permits, neither nor was the Alderman aware of the project until two weeks ago when we met with the client. So that's why she wants to, to make sure she, she looks at the entire scope of the project. Because we only sat with you two weeks ago and you've been working on this program for over a year.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna grant the continuance. Uh, we're gonna continue this matter to January twentieth. Of twenty twenty-three. Uh, so again, uh, this is for calendar number three seventy-nine. Dash twenty-two dash S will be continued to January twentieth, twenty twenty-three and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, next up. Is four thirty-two dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirty-one fifteen West Armitage. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Also, please uh accept the promotion. Uh, Lupe Marino, you have to accept the promotion to panelist. You, you don't have.
And if you're, uh, if you're on the phone, it's, it's, it's star nine to raise your hand. If you are looking to be promoted.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, we can hear you, yes.
Okay. That was, that was hard enough.
Who's speaking?
This is Lupe Marino.
Okay, okay. Uh, you're, you're one of the uh objectors for this matter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Um, I can see we've got Counselor Scott. Uh, Counselor, you have, I have three witnesses?
Uh, we have a total of four, actually. I think I'm missing, I didn't see, I just looked through the, the roster. I didn't see Dan Farrell. I'm not sure if.
I, I have on my list, I've got Peter Pulos, Adam Rack and Dan Farrell.
That's correct. I'm sorry, and also Greg Elliott, uh, the owner. So a total of four.
Okay. All right, let me see here.
I love the square chamber of commerce.
I'm sorry?
I I saw Peter, Adam and Greg on. I don't know about Dan Farrell.
I'm on, Adam.
Okay. All right, here's, let let me um, let me get everybody sworn in. And then we'll we'll go through how this is gonna proceed because we do have uh objectors. Um, okay. Dan, uh Dan Farrell, can you state your name and address, please?
Daniel Farrell, thirty-six oh one West Algonquin, Suite seven thirty, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, six zero 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 eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh do we have uh Greg Elliott?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Gregory Elliott, forty-two fifty-five South Indiana, Chicago, six zero six five three.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh Adam Rack, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Adam Rack, uh WBK Engineering located one sixteen West Main Street, St. Charles, Illinois, six zero one seven four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Peter Pulos, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Peter Pulos, offices at two, at two thirty West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Um, all right, let me um I can see we've got someone on from uh the first ward office. Nick, uh can you um state your name and role, please?
Absolutely. Good to see you, Chairman. Uh my name is Nicholas Zettel. I am the Chief of Staff at the First Ward Service Office at nineteen fifty-eight North Milwaukee.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And um I'll just ask you right now, do you want to speak at the beginning of this matter, at the end? What's your preference?
I am fine speaking at the end as needed. The the fact of the matter is um the Alderman Laspada has ensured that I'm here to make sure that uh I I I understand that we have um potentially differing views from the community on the call. So it is our, we submitted a whole pack of everything that has been received at the ward office in terms of um communications on this because we've had some divided um divided community input. So it is my role here to make sure that the community is heard. And so um if if you need uh further, further input from me, I'm happy to speak, but I really wanna I really want to make sure that our um our community members are heard today.
As do we. Um we will, I'll circle back with you at the end to see if there's anything uh else you you want to add. Um, let me uh, let's see here. I'm just gonna start looking at names here. Uh Douglas uh Raul Williams, are you here in objection of this matter?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and uh could you state your name and address, please?
Uh Douglas Row Williams, nineteen thirty-five North Kedzie Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh Lupe, uh you're here in objection, correct?
Yes, I am.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Lupe Marino at nineteen twenty-one North Kedzie Avenue, six oh six four seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And we have someone from the uh Logan Square Chamber of Commerce. Could you uh, are you first, are you here in support or objection? Oh, you're muted right now. For the Logan Square Chamber of Commerce, you're muted at the moment.
My unmuted now? Please forgive me. Yes, this is I Nilda Espaza, Executive Director of the Logan Square Chamber of Commerce. We excuse me, are at twenty-eight oh eight North Milwaukee Avenue, and we are in support of the project.
Okay, um could you um spell uh your first and last name for the court reporter?
Uh Nilda N. I. Alice and Larry D. David A. Apple Espaza, E. S. P. A. R. Z. A.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and let me see here. Uh we've got someone with the uh eight four seven phone number. Are you here? Uh if you want to unmute and uh let us know if you're here in support or objection of this matter?
The person just hung up, Chairman.
Oh, okay. All right, is there anyone I haven't called?
Excuse me, Chairman. So sorry to interrupt. This is Nick from the ward office again. We've got the Alderman, we've got the Alderman jumping on the call, so I'm wondering um do you want to wait and uh um swear him in now or should we just wait till till he's actually on and?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get him on. We'll get him on. I will uh, I'll swear him in and then I'll see, you know, if he if he's just gonna do the same thing, but we'll, we'll hear from him before we.
Okay, cool. Perfect. Yeah, I I haven't heard that there's any issues yet, so I just, I wanted to flag that uh while you're swearing everyone in. We got hopefully one more jumping on.
Okay.
There there's also someone from First Ward Iris Postma, that next colleague or?
That is my colleague. Uh they are just listening.
You know, while we're waiting, I will um, I'll just go ahead and read the department's um recommendation for this one. This is the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for calendar number four thirty-two dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, World of Weed, Inc. Two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. Three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the landscape plan dated November third, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Daniel Weinbach and Partners. And four, and floor plan and elevations, two sheets dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Collective Office Architecture Interiors Design Strategy. And four, prior to any portion of the first floor identified as NIC on the floor plan and or any portion of any basement space, if applicable, being utilized, the applicant must file an application and receive approval from the zoning board of appeals to amend this special use. Okay. Let's see.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, question, please. Uh what does, what that statement you just read, what does NIC refer to?
And let's see.
At the very end of the statement where they would have to.
Not in contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again. I'm making it a primer on Sony. Um so not in contact, does that refer to, for example, if they're only using one half of the property uh for their current uh business that they've applied for? Uh does that mean that uh perhaps it, I know that if they wanted to extend the business to the other half, they would have to ask for another special. But would that also be true if, for example, and it's a question I guess that perhaps the attorney for the applicants can answer, but is, does their contract include the fact that they can sublet or use the other half they're not using currently in the future without having to go for a special?
Those are questions that you'll be able to ask the applicant once they put on their case. Um and I'll, I'll get to how this is gonna go, but you'll have the opportunity to ask that question.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't have an attorney on our side.
Yes. Okay, I can see we have Alderman Laspada on now. So Alderman, um once you're ready, if you could unmute and then state your name and role, please.
Yes, this is Daniel Laspada, Alderman in the first ward.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Um now, we had heard from Nick that uh he just was on here to make sure that uh the community is heard on this matter. And I was gonna come back to him uh at the end to see if there was anything further. Uh is it the same for you, Alderman?
Uh yes, if Nick spoke, let me just amplify what I I would imagine that he shared that.
Sure.
There, there is certainly a diversity of community feedback on this. But it would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out how we'd received a petition for over sixty first ward residents opposing the special use permit being discussed today. Um, I just wanted to make sure that as we go through the case today, we really did go through it point by point, talk about the the merits or challenges. I I know that the challenge that we're facing is that the the applicant has not yet met with our Chamber of Commerce in Logan Square, and that's something that we want to make sure happens. Um certainly, my office has been here in the past to support ZBA dispensary applications, but this is one that we we definitely have some community concerns that we want to make sure get fully heard and addressed.
Okay, thank you for that. Um that is uh what we're gonna try and do today. Uh let me uh, let me read something so that everybody uh understands how uh the uh this hearing is 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 gonna go since we do have objectors. I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. This is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here's how the hearing is going to proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all of their witnesses. Uh then we'll turn to supporters to put on their case as to why they're in support. Then we'll turn to the objectors and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses and supporters. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, the board members will be asking questions of both the applicant and the objectors. And of course, uh the Alderman or someone from his staff will also have the opportunity to speak uh should they uh desire. Okay, so with that being said, Counselor Scott, uh please put on your case in full and I want to uh just remind you that it would not be proper to have somebody testify to their affidavit now. Be, if it's testimony, if if you want the testimony to be considered, the objectors need to be able to hear it.
We okay? I'm away?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Andrew Scott with the Law Offices of Dykemagossit, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, World of Weed, Inc. Um, just as a matter of background, uh we filed our application on August twenty-second uh for a special use permit, adult-use uh cannabis dispensary at three one one five uh Arm, West Armitage Avenue. I think um Nick and the Alderman would attest to sort of all on the way, we've been in close communication with them, letting them know what's going on, letting them know what we're doing. Uh again, to the point of making sure that their office is aware and in part that the, you know, if to reach out to the community and make sure that they were aware of what was being proposed. And I think also, as the board knows, uh the zoning ordinance requires one community meeting uh to be held within the ward uh where the proposed dispensary is located. We did that. Uh we had a meeting on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, we actually had four attendees. We actually expected a whole lot more people. We only had four attendees on that day. Um, as a matter of belt and suspenders, and again, to try to engage the community and give more people the opportunity to participate, we went above and beyond what was required by the zoning ordinance, and we held a virtual meeting uh that uh, you know, people were able to participate the following evening on uh September twenty-second. Uh, we mailed out notice of that meeting uh to everybody within two hundred and fifty feet. We also published, if you wanted to participate virtually uh in the Sun Times, we provided the link information to the Alderman's office, uh should anybody reach out to them and if they wanted to publish it on their website. So again, uh, you know, in the interest of engaging the community and hearing what folks had to say, uh we certainly did more uh than is required by law. And for, you know, frankly, it's the, you know, it it it's good to have a good, robust dialogue. And um at that meeting, you know, again, we expected a whole lot more participants, uh but we only had eleven people sign in. And I believe three or four of them were actually the ones that participated in our uh September twenty-first meeting. And then just, you know, for the record, uh as was required by the uh City of Chicago zoning ordinance, we did notify all taxpayers of record within two hundred and fifty feet. We published the notice in the Chicago Sun-Times and um, you know, had the, had the notice signage up on the property. Um, I think within your packet and the Alderman and uh Nick Zettel have alluded to, you know, there are, there's a petition out there. Uh but we also have a number of supporters, a number of folks that wrote into uh, wrote into the ward and also the zoning board of appeals to articulate uh their support for a dispensary at this location. And so again, there, there is community support out there. Um, you know, notwithstanding what Ms. Moreno and perhaps Mr. Williams will say. And then, you know, I think it's also important to point out that uh, you know, Mr. Williams, he was one of the participants at our community meeting and, you know, we had a very you know, I'm gonna say healthy exchange dialogue uh before the presentation started, as we were waiting for folks to file in because I wanted to, you know, find out where he lived and um and sort of what his concerns were. And, you know, he's obviously gonna speak, but the it it was largely around just, you know, cannabis in general. I'm not sure it, you know, that that was the opposition. And then in terms of Ms. Moreno, I had heard that somebody was concerned about uh, you know, circulating petition. And I never heard anything. Uh, you know, you know, she's within the, with the notice range of getting a letter. And so, you know, Nick Zettel at the Alderman's office was kind enough to connect us because I said I'd like to talk to her. I'd like to hear, you know, prior to the hearing, what the concerns are. And so, you know, she and I spoke for probably thirty or forty minutes. Uh I, you know, heard what her concerns were and you know, again, she's gonna, she's gonna testify and say, you know, why she's opposed to uh this proposed use at this location. But as that, you know, I I was empathetic to concerns that she raised generally about the neighborhood. I mean, maybe not necessarily about uh our dispensary, but sort of other businesses and other things that had gone on in the community. Um, you know, she raised the the point that, you know, nothing against cannabis in general, but just, you know, not here, not in our neighborhood. And then, you know, you're also gonna hear probably her concerned about our use of armed security guards. Uh Dan Farrell is gonna speak to that and why we do it, but you know, really, I I mentioned all this, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, to say that there has been a fulsome effort to engage with the community, hear what they have to say, uh try to address and, you know, make modifications where we can. Uh, because we do want to be good members of the community and we want to engage with the community, not just sort of in the beginning, but also going forward. So I I mentioned all that only to to point out that we've tried very hard to engage uh with our our neighbors and everyone in the community. Um, just turning to the site and Um, just turning to the site and give you a little bit of background on the property, uh, you see it right in the middle. It's the one zone C one, two, with the cars in the middle, Armitage Avenue is to the north of it. Uh, it may be a little bit confusing because it looks like an L-shaped building, but the building to the east that zone B three dash one, that's actually a different building and our building uh, butts up against it. So we, we've got kind of a, a party wall there. You, you see it. That's a shot looking south, standing on Armitage Avenue and immediately to the east there, you can see the brick building next to the tree. Separate property, separate ownership has nothing to do, uh, what, with what we're proposing to do here. And then, as you can clearly see, this is a, this is a recent photo of the subject property. It's currently a laundromat, the, the entire building. It's about sixty-two hundred square feet. Um, it's a laundromat, um, and the owner of the laundromat, he's, you know, they've been in business for many, many years at the location. And they're actually looking to wind down the business. So that's why we've actually, you know, we're, we're leasing the property. Or, you know, have entered into a lease contingent upon approval of, of our zoning application. And to the point that was raised earlier, it, as I said, it's about a sixty-two hundred square foot building. But the site plan that we've submitted, it is only for about half of the building, uh, roughly twenty-eight hundred square feet. Um, yeah, we sort of were turned around north is, north is up, uh, on the photo. So we'll get to the site plan, the interior floor plan in just a minute. But, uh, another thing that's important to point out here, could we flip back just to the site photo? The, there we go. So you can see the condition of the property right now. It's a little bit tired. It looks like it used a little bit of top coating, re-striping, not very much landscaping. And if we could flip forward. Thanks. Um, so what we have here is th- this is the proposed improvements to the parking lot area of the, uh, of the property, uh, assuming we go ahead and get approvals here and go forward with the project. And a- again, you sort of saw what it looked like before. Uh, one of the things that was attractive about the site from the beginning is, you know, the amount of parking that's available there today. We of course realize that, uh, you know, by, you know, by terms of the zoning ordinance, we do have to make improve, you know, because of the level of improvements that we're take, making to the building, we have to bring the parking lot into compliance with the zoning ordinance. And so that's what you see there. It is a total of twelve parking spaces down from the eighteen or nineteen that are there today. But again, we've got a very, very nice landscape plan there, a lot of greenery. We've got the seven foot setback. We're adding a street tree. So in, just in terms of general aesthetics and appearance, uh, yes, we're required to do it by the terms of the zoning ordinance, but it's going to look, uh, it's going to look a whole lot better. Um, and it'll be just an improvement on, on the area. And I think another thing that's important to point out is that, again, we are roughly twenty-eight hundred square feet. We are in the C one, two zoning classification. We're technically not required to have any parking at all. The none, you know, the, the first four thousand square feet of retail space uh, under the zoning is you're exempt from any parking and then it's two and a half spaces after that. So again, we're not required to have any parking, but for this use at this location, we actually have twelve parking spaces that are available for, uh, for our customers. In terms of the surrounding land uses, and Adam is going to talk about this a little bit more. Uh, you know, these are, you know, one, two and three story buildings. Uh, you have largely a mix of retail, commercial, uh, office uses on the ground floor ranges from, you know, immediately to our west, we have a pawn shop. We've got a bake shop and a subway, subway restaurant. There's a number of, uh, bars and taverns down the street. There's a brewery immediately to the east. Uh, there's an insurance, uh, insurance office a little bit to the east. So again, this is a, it, it's a solidly retail, commercial corridor, um, and very, very appropriate for this type of use. Um, we actually, and Adam will speak to this in a little while, but, uh, you know, as is required by the zoning ordinance, we did conduct a land use survey in March of twenty twenty-two as we were going into the, uh, into the process and we were able to verify that there are no schools within five hundred feet of the subject property. Um, as is required by the, by the zoning ordinance. And again, I believe that's in your package and the materials that we submitted to the board. Um, can we go forward, I think, to the floor plan? There we go. Um, so here, again, I apologize, but the, the orientation is a little bit different. So here north is to the bottom of the screen that you're looking at. So the parking lot is outside bottom of the reception area. Uh, but again, this is about a twenty-eight hundred square foot property. The entrance is off of the, um, the entrance is off of the, um, where you saw it with the, uh, the current laundromat. Um, in terms of it, you know, you may have heard this with other dispensaries, there, there's a lot of glass on the, um, on the laundromat now. As required by law, you cannot have any of, uh, any of the space within a dispensary that, uh, where cannabis products are visible. So there will be opacity to the glass that you're not going to, you know, people can't be hanging out, staying in the, in the parking lot, whatever the case may be, looking in, kind of seeing, seeing what the products are on the interior. Uh, in terms of the exterior of the building, and, you know, we'll get to the, to the elevations in a bit, we're not making a whole lot of changes. Um, it, it's going to be very tasteful, uh, very discreet. Uh, we're not going to have any flashing lights. There's not going to be LED, anything like that. Uh, just, it's going to be a couple of signs. There's an existing pylon sign that's in the, uh, parking lot today. We will use that for business identification. And then you saw before on the elevation, uh, today of the, uh, of the laundromat, we'll probably use that for business identification as well. Um, again, to the point of the exterior, it's not going to change a whole lot other than the parking lot. Um, really where, where all the work happens here is on the interior of the, of the property. Uh, it's going to be built out very, very, you know, hu- high level, uh, finishes. Uh, a lot of the money that goes into a dispensary is actually, it, it comes via the, um, the security, um, security infrastructure that's necessary, the cameras, uh, sort of all the electrical, all that. So all of that is going to be, uh, within the building. Uh, bottom line is, you know, really this is going to be a substantial investment, half a million to seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, both the improvements to the parking lot and also improvements on the interior. So i- it's really going to improve, uh, you know, the, the appearance of the area, uh, in the surrounding area. So if it's okay with you, I don't know if there are any questions there. I'd actually like to call my first witness. I'd like to call Greg Elliott and, um, sort of go from there.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Greg, you're on?
I'm here.
Okay, great. So, um, again, Greg Elliott, you're the, uh, you're the owner of the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And from your perspective, it's your opinion that the proposed dispensary, it's necessary for the public convenience at this location. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you visited the property, you're familiar with the improvements and you're familiar with the proposed build outs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And y- you're aware that there are no other dispensaries within fifteen hundred feet of the subject property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in fact, the closest dispensary, i- it's a little bit of more than a mile away. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this is a convenient location for a number of reasons, one of which is it's accessible by the CTA bus lines that, that travel on West Armitage and North Kedzie. Is that correct?
It is correct.
And then also you're a couple of blocks of the North Bloomingdale Trail. So, you know, at that, that provides a very easy east-west, uh, you know, means of transit for both pedestrians, people on bikes, people on scooters, things of that nature. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then I had talked about before how we are doing all the improvements to the parking lot. And just as a matter of, uh, clarity, you're providing more parking for your customers than is actually required, um, by the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so really what, what we're doing here is that you're proposing a dispensary in a location that's easily accessible in multiple forms of transportation, meaning public transit, people can bike, people can walk, people can come by car. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. And then just turning really quickly to general operations of the dispensary. Uh, in terms of employees, you're anticipating twenty-five to thirty-five, uh, full-time employees at this location?
Yes.
And those employees are going to range from a general manager, assistant manager, uh, you're going to have retail assistants. Is that also correct?
Correct.
And then you're also going to have a security guard onsite at all times that the dispensary is open. And also when an employee is still within the, the premises, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. And then just during a typical shift, uh, it's ten to twelve employees. Uh, is that about right?
Yes.
And then for busier days, you're able to staff up, staff down as necessary, you know, if there are, you know, busier days, uh, in the cannabis industry?
Correct. We will.
And just talking about the types of products that you're offering, it's going to be sort of similar to other dispensaries. It'll be flour, edible, topicals, oils. Just again, you're going to, uh, serve your customers, provide, you know, provide whatever's in demand, uh, for your facility. Is that correct?
All correct.
Okay. And it's also correct that by state law, everything is prepackaged in Illinois, right?
Yes.
And because of that prepackaging, they're not going to be any odors, they're not going to be any smells that are emanating from the property, right?
Right.
And so you're not going to have a negative impact on the, you know, your neighbors or anybody in the area because of that is right? Is that right?
That's correct.
And then also by state law, you're required for customers who leave the dispensary, they have to leave, uh, with their purchases in a sealed package. Is that right?
Yes, they do.
Okay. In terms of hours of operation, uh, the proposal is nine to ten, Monday through Thursday, eight to ten on Friday and Saturday, then nine to seven on Sundays. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then just in terms of customer management procedures, uh, you are going to have the ability for, for customers to order online in order to expedite, um, in order to expedite, uh, sales?
Yes.
And then you're going to have approximately ten points of sale, uh, within the dispensary in order, again, to, uh, to get customers in and out?
Correct.
And then, uh, just in terms of other practices, uh, there is the capacity to, you, you're going to be able to avoid having lines uh, sort of outside the building. If necessary, you can create queuing areas uh, within the reception area in order to ensure that, you know, nobody's standing outside waiting to get in. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, I think, Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I immediately have of, uh, of Mr. Elliott. Uh, if I could turn to Adam Rack. Adam, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Um, so Adam, again, if you could state your name, uh, well, you've got your name, Adam Rack, but your company, uh, for the record?
Yes, I am an urban planner with WBK Engineering located at one sixteen West Main Street, St. Charles, Illinois.
Okay. And you're familiar with the subject property?
Yes, I am.
And you've also, you're familiar with the area surrounding the subject property, probably within a thousand feet in every direction. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you prepared a special use analysis dated July twelfth, twenty twenty-two on behalf of the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And if you could please, for the board, uh, go through the provisions of your special use analysis and provide a summary of the, of the salient points as to your testimony?
Yeah, uh, absolutely. Um, so as we know, the property is zone C one. It's located in the neighborhood commercial, uh, district. And it's classified as dash two for bulk and density designations. Uh, the primary purpose of the neighborhood commercial district is to provide a broad range of small-scale business services and commercial uses that are more auto-oriented and more intensive than the typical B one uses. Uh, as Andrew stated earlier, adult use cannabis dispensary is allowed via special use in the C one district. Um, I believe that the timing Andrew stated earlier, back in March, sometime prior to my report in July, a reconnaissance of the land use, uh, of land uses within five hundred feet was completed. Um, we took a look at the Armitage Avenue corridor. It includes a variety of commercial and retail uses with mixed uses, including commercial, retail on the ground floor uh, and other residential uses above on floors two, three, and upwards of four. Uh, there are also a limited number of industrial uses and manufacturing uses in, in the vicinity, north and south from the corridor, uh, creating sort of a gradient, uh, as typical in other commercial corridors. Uh, the use has transitioned to mostly, uh, kind of residential, single-family and multifamily uses. Uh, and that's really typical, as you would see in most, uh, commercial corridors, particularly in urban environments like the city. I have reviewed the criteria for special use, for approval of special uses, uh, and, uh, that's set forth in the zoning ordinance. Uh, and I'll go through those quickly as well. As I said earlier, uh, adult use cannabis dispensaries are allowed in the C one district. The proposed structure, the total gross floor area is six thousand four hundred square feet, of which I believe twenty-eight hundred is to be used. And that complies with the maximum of allowable gross floor area for commercial structures in that district. Uh, all operations will be conducted inside the premises with no outdoor storage. The existing structure is a single-story structure, therefore floor height and floor area of ground floor requirements do not apply. There are no proposed exterior modifications that would intensify any legal non-conformities currently existing. There are no schools located within five hundred feet of the proposed special use. Uh, and as defined in the zoning ordinance and as Andrew touched on earlier, uh, based on the floor area, the proposed special use will require five parking spaces. There are twelve spaces on site. Uh, as a result, uh, result, the reduction occurred to, uh, bring the property up, uh, into compliance with the landscape ordinance. Uh, finally, also, as Andrew said earlier, all signage will comply with the limits set forth in the ordinance. Uh, the proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the community or the neighborhood surrounding. Uh, we believe, and it's true a fact, that the special use affords a safe, well-run and easily accessible facility for customers to legally purchase cannabis product. And there are no dispensaries as noted nearby. Uh, the location is close to the Humboldt Boulevard and Palmer Square Park and is in a convenient location to bicyclists and pedestrians enjoying the Chicago Park Boulevard Historic District. Uh, the location is well-served to public transit, including CTA Bus Route seventy-three. And it offers, uh, adequate parking both onsite, as noted earlier, and along Armitage Avenue. Uh, the city itself has adopted standards for zoning districts and land uses, which are in place to protect the community and the neighborhood. Uh, furthermore, the state has also adopted very strict licensing requirements for operators uh, of cannabis dispensaries that were put in place to protect the general welfare of the neighborhood and the surrounding community. And, and the proposed special use will operate in strict compliance with both the cities and local rules, uh, as well as the state licensing requirements in order to maintain their licensing standing. Uh, we believe that the proposed special use will actually have a positive impact on other retail and commercial uses in the area. Uh, we're going to be renovating a currently underutilized space. Uh, and this, uh, may create demand for other retail space in the area uh, and opportunities for new businesses along the, the Armitage Avenue border due to that entry, increased foot traffic, which we expect our business to bring. Uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Elliott's capital investment in the property will generate new real estate taxes and increased sales tax revenue. And we, uh, know that that revenue will be allocated towards capital improvement projects and other social programs for the city that are in support of, uh, the health and well-being of the local community. In terms of compatibility with the surrounding area, a building scale right in the area along the corridor ranges in size from one to four stories, with most of the buildings constructed lot line to lot line. Uh, our property offers a generous front seat back, which provides that additional parking onsite, uh, that we talked about earlier. Uh, the proposed improvements, as, as, uh, Andrew Scott stated earlier, will, uh, will modernize the outside of the building. Uh, but really, most of the money will be going into the interior floor plan improvements. Um, and, uh, it's important to note that none of the improvements planned, uh, will alter the planning and or scale of the building, which might impact the surrounding area or, or existing character of the corridor. Uh, in terms of compatibility with the surrounding area, in terms of operations, operating hours, lighting, noise, traffic generation. Uh, Greg touched on that a, a little bit earlier as well. Uh, the proposed special use will operate very similarly to all other retail uses along the corridor. Uh, with the exception, of course, that, uh, uh, customers will be required to furnish a proper ID, uh, at the reception area before entering the store. Operating hours will be typical standard retail hours. I did a quick, uh, look at other operators in the area. Uh, you know, some of the bars and restaurants are open beyond midnight. Uh, the, the Walgreens is, uh, open till ten AM across the street and some of the other, uh, offices and other commercial uses operating, uh, varies, you know, between five to seven to nine o'clock at night. Uh, so the proposed special use is kind of within that realm of expected, uh, hours of operation along the border. Uh, the entrance to the store will be well-lit with signage and it will comply with all, uh, requirements of the city's ordinance. And as I, we said earlier, all operations will incur indoors. All queuing will incur in the reception area as to not generate any excessive noise. Uh, that would be in excess of any other noise that would be generated by a similar retail use, uh, in this location. Uh, due to the proximity to Palmer Square Park and Humboldt Boulevard and various walking and bicycle paths, trails and sidewalks along Armitage Avenue uh, and to local public transit, uh, we do anticipate that most, many customers, I should say, will arrive by foot uh, due to this convenient location. Uh, as we said earlier, the subject property provides, uh, a surplus of parking in addition to the parking located along Armitage Avenue. Uh, based on this compatibility with the surrounding land uses, the proximity to available public transit, accessibility to bicycle and pedestrian amenities, and the availability of on-street and off-street parking, uh, we do not believe that this proposed use will generate traffic in excess of other similar retail uses uh, that could be constructed by right at this location. Uh, finally, uh, in terms of the proposed use, uh, and its promotion of pedestrian safety and comfort, Uh, finally, uh, in terms of the proposed use, uh, and its promotion of pedestrian safety and comfort, uh, as we stated previously, the the property is well-suited to public transit, and its proximity to various bicycle and uh pedestrian men- amenities and parks in the area uh is a considerable uh asset. Um, Armitage Avenue is also designed as a typical retail corridor uh in this location, and that inherently promotes pedestrian comfort and safety due to uh consistent architecture, design scale, and other amenities that are provided along the corridor. The street width from right away is uh measured from building face to building face, and this location is approximately sixty-six feet wide. Uh, each side of the street incorporates an approximate eleven to twelve-foot sidewalk, uh, nine feet of parallel parking and twelve-foot travel lanes. Uh, typically, in urban design principles, parallel parking is used to provide a barrier between the travel lanes and pedestrians along the sidewalk. Uh, so another uh, another feature of this location promoting pedestrian comfort. Uh, buildings along the corridor feature design elements such as a building base articulation, which is scaled to the pedestrian, uh, the pedestrian realm and frontage, retail storefronts, signage, lighting, canopies, and awnings. Uh, the streets include landscaping and pedestrian amenities, including bicycle racks, uh, parking waste uh, waste receptacles and benches, uh, all of which contribute to that pedestrian realm along the corridor. Uh, furthermore, uh, if you see, saw back in the landscape plan, uh, there are plans to potentially include a striped crosswalk, which would connect the existing sidewalk along Armitage Avenue to the front door. Uh, that crosswalk would be delineated with uh striping through the parking lot um to make it a highly visible uh and and adequate crossing for pedestrians uh entering our site. Uh, based on the evidence that I presented, I I believe that the proposed special use to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary at three one one five West Armitage complies with all the special use standards and cannabis standards found in the city's ordinance. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Adam, thanks very much. Mr. Chairman, unless there are questions from the board, I'll move on to uh Peter Pulos.
Any questions from the board at this time? Let's keep going.
Okay, uh, I'd like to now call Peter Pulos from B V G Real Estate Services. Peter, you're on?
Yes, I'm on, good afternoon.
And even though I just stated your company, would you please state the company and address for the record, please?
It's B V G Chicago, two thirty West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois.
And you're a licensed appraiser with the state of Illinois?
That's correct.
And you have visited the subject property and you're familiar with it?
That's correct.
And you also prepared a special use analysis dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two on behalf of the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And just like Adam, can you please summarize for the board uh the findings within your uh special use analysis?
I'm sure we, we found that the subject does meet all the criteria of special use. Um, Adam did a wonderful job going through the compatibility and the pedestrian safety, so uh professor safety, interest of public convenience. We, um, our, our report agrees with that, um, with all that. Uh, we also, um, one thing that we add in our report is the uh property value analysis. Um, we did find that um opening cannabis dispensary similar to the subject has no detrimental effect on property values. And we do have a local comparable uh property that we looked at, um, and we also uh considered several other stu- studies from around the country. Um, other than that, you know, we, 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 like I said, we conclude the uh special use meeting all the criteria.
Peter, if you could just elaborate a little bit on the impact on surrounding property values and the and the comparable uh that you refer to?
Sure, so we went to, we, we looked at um dispensary thirty-three, which is located at five thousand one North Clark. And what we did is we looked at um property values in the surrounding areas after the dispensary opened. Um, and we, we noticed that property values um did not decrease at subsequent to the opening. As a matter of fact, they in, they uh appreciated after that. So, and we do have a chart um in the report that shows that, but we do have um a specific location that was a comparable property.
Okay, and you also, in your report, and you referenced a minute ago, other studies that you relied on and reviewed in connection with impact on uh property values as a result of a dispensary locating at a particular spot. Can you just briefly speak to that?
Yeah, that's correct. So, um, there, there have been a few studies that were, that have been formed, one of them notably in the Chicago Tribune in twenty nineteen um regarding, uh, you know, cannabis dispensaries in neighborhoods. Um, in in all of the studies that we, that we've researched, there's been no evidence um of of property value depreciations. As a matter of fact, in um some of the studies, there's, they have seen significant positive effect on values. Um, if if anything, um, there's a proper, there's a value neutrality there, um, but there's, there's no, there's no evidence of any detrimental property values.
Okay, and I believe you said that um, that, yeah, in part, just to elaborate on this a little bit, that, you know, the, the report that you're referencing is that actually because of the high level of security that's associated with a um dispensary, there's actually a, people have seen a reduction in crime.
That's correct. So, and then that, the, the, the cameras, the security, um, also just the, the, the commerce that it generates, you know, people going there and being there certain hours, uh, you know, and just activity. Uh, but yes, the high security is really, um, it, it shows a reduction in crime.
Great, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, uh, questions from the board, or would you like me to move on?
Let's keep going. Well, at the end of your case, we'll see if there's questions uh at that time.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, like to next call, uh, Dan Farrell, Dan, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, could you state your name and your company for the record, please?
Daniel Farrell, Silver Star Protection Group.
Great, thank you. Um, and you're a principal with Silver Star Protection Group, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have been hired to provide security at the subject property should uh it receive all approvals, open up, et cetera?
Yes.
And you're licensed with the state of the Illinois, with the, by the state of Illinois to provide security services, is that correct?
Yes.
You're familiar with the subject property?
Yes.
You visited it, and so you're also familiar with the surrounding area?
Yes.
Um, if you could just, again, talk a little bit about your background uh for the board and talk about the security features of the dispensary, uh, that would, I would appreciate it.
Sounds good. Silver Star Protection Group is a company that's owned by myself and my twin brother. My twin brother is a retired U S marshal. He spent twenty-four years with the Marshal Service here in Chicago. Um, he did anything from designing courthouses for the security infrastructure to protecting Supreme Court justices, to running the Great Lakes Task Force where they would hunt federal fugitives. So he brings a tremendous amount of law enforcement and security expertise to the industry. Our company was founded in twenty fourteen, coinciding with the Legal Cannabis uh Medicinal Act. We have been day one providers of security in the cannabis industry. Um, we opened up with G T I and Mundeline, which was the first dispensary that opened in Illinois. We bring a tremendous amount of experience and knowledge and best practices to each location that we service. We have a great understanding of the regulations. Illinois is a very heavily regulated state uh in terms of the requirements for security. Um, we have evolved into a company that has over a hundred different cannabis clients across three states, which would be Illinois, Michigan, and Missouri. Our process to protect these facilities um starts with trying to be good stewards to the community. So one of the first things we do is we will reach out to the neighboring uh businesses and introduce ourselves as the security company and be proactive. We don't expect any issues, but if there are, we want people to have a open line of communication to us. We also will meet with the Chief of Police and his staff, his or her staff, to uh go over our security plan, review it with them, and then talk about how we're going to partner with them uh should something happen at the facility. Um, when we look at this facility particularly, our approach is to use concentric circles of protection to ensure safety that starts in the parking lot, where we're going to have sufficient lighting. Um, and then there'll be cameras on the entire exterior of the building. Um, the whole building itself will have cameras by regulation. Uh, every inch of the facility will have a camera in it, except for the bathrooms. Um, so there will be five megapixels cameras on the outside with the ability to uh take pictures of faces and read license plates. Um, on the interior, we use two point one megapixel cameras. Uh, and it, the data needs to be stored for at least ninety days in the state of Illinois that can be reviewed at any time. So every inch of the facility will have um camera, uh, you know, uh, uh, stored data and footage. Uh, we also put access controls through the facility, so that means, you know, the doors on entry going through the facility will have an E-strike, which means someone would need to take a pad or a uh fob to get in and out. So we limit the access of going through the facility. And so when we look at the floor plan that's up on the, the screen right now, the state breaks the dispensary into three different um types of uh zones. So the first is the public access area, which would be the reception area. So that's the, the front part, you know, um, with the door in, and then if you look to the right of the reception area, it's where the sales floor is, as well as the point of sale. That is what we call the limited access area, which means that in order for someone to get into the limited access area, they would have to come into the reception, and at the reception, we would ask them for their driver's license. And they would have to show their face on camera, and we would take that driver's license and use the barcode on the back to, you put it into a scanner, which hits a database that confirms that it's a valid driver's license and that uh that person is twenty-one. Once we have identified that that person's in twenty-one, we will access control them into the sales room. And that limits the flow of traffic in there. Um, and then in the sales floor, it's important for everybody to know that this is not like an alcohol store. There is no product on the floor. It is all stal- stored in the vault. So there may be some canisters, you know, for show on the counters, but they will have no product in them. Um, and then when you're in the sales floor, you know, someone will help you with your order if you need it. And then going up to the point of sale, that's where the limited access area ends. Behind the limited access area is what they call the restricted access area. And that means that any employee uh that goes into the limited access area must have a badge. And in order to get a badge, you need to apply to the state, whether you provide your fingerprints, a background check, so they screen you. And then once you get the approval from the state to be badged, you can be in restricted access area. So it's important for everybody to know, no customer, it would only be employees of uh the dispensary that could get back there. And remember, it's access controlled, so to get to the point of sale, you'd have to go through an access control to get into the back of the house where the vault is, it's also access controlled. Um, and then uh as a best practice, we only allow um access to the vault to certain people. And there needs to be two people there at all times to avoid theft, loss, and diversion. Um, in order for someone to complete a transaction at the point of sale, they would have to come up and place the order. I should point out that there is a second I D check at the point of sale. So before you can place your order, they will ask you for your driver's license again to ensure that you're twenty-one and that you are the person on that driver's license. Once they verify that you're twenty-one, you will give them that order. It is put into a system in Illinois called BioTrack, which is the seed to sale system, which tracks all the product from what is produced at a cultivation through transportation through the dispensary to the sale, which limits theft, loss, and diversion. Once that order is placed, the, there was, there would be someone that would go to the vault, grab the product, it's brought back to the point of sale, and then they will confirm the order in front of cameras and just verify with the client that that's what they ordered. Once that's all agreed, there is a transaction that happens, it's either paid by cash or PIN debit card. Most of the transactions these days are by PIN debit card. And once that transaction is complete, it is put into a sealed bag. And then they, the customer is proactively told that they are not allowed to consume that cannabis until they get to their home residence, that they're not allowed to consume in their car. They're not allowed to loiter in front, and that we ask them to leave. So when a customer completes their transaction and exits the building, our guards will monitor the camera to ensure that they're not loitering out front or in their car, and if they do, we'll ask them to leave. In terms of the back of the house, you know, obviously, anybody that needs to be back there needs to be badged, including our security guard. As it was mentioned earlier in the um presentation, we will have an armed security guard on the presence. Usually, we're there when the store opens, we will do a, a sweep of the facility before the employees come in. And then when the last employee leaves at night, our armed guard will walk them to their car to ensure that they leave. And our armed guard will be the last person to leave. During the day, our armed guard would be responsible for being at the reception desk and overseeing the sales floor, as well as monitoring the camera. They will periodically do exterior perimeter sweeps, and then they will also be present at any delivery that would happen. And we have very tight protocols for the deliveries as well. Um, we do tend to be proactive, you know, if we do see people out in front that shouldn't be there, our guards will go out, talk to them, assess whether they should be there or not. But we take a very strong approach to recruiting the right officers. Usually, we're looking for former uh military, people with very high exceptional customer service skills. Our whole program is about deescalate, de-escalation. I know there was a concern in regards to using armed security officers. Our policy is very stringent. No officer is allowed to draw their weapon unless there's an imminent threat to human life. So we want to make sure we keep the customers and employees safe. Someone would have come in there and tried to rob the facility, not that we're going to make it easy for them to do it, but we're not going to draw our gun. That's what we have insurance for. We want to make sure that the staff and the customers are safe. And, you know, we'll, we'll let the criminals, if they want to take product or money, you know, we're not going to engage in a gunfight over that. That's what the insurance is there for. So, um, we do a lot of training of our guards, they have to go through a twenty-hour unarmed class, a twenty-hour armed class, they have to qualify yearly at a range. We have to provide ten hours of additional training every year. And then we have a field supervisor that comes out to the facility that does weekly trainings, as well as meets with the staff to ensure that we are doing everything we're supposed to, um, and we have a very high-touch relationship with both the customer and the community.
Dan, thanks. I'm going to ask you to touch on a couple of things. Can you talk about the level of security on the, on the vault and it meeting D A, DEA standards?
Yeah, so the regulations in, say that it has to adhere to the DEA standards, the same standard so Walgreens or any other facility would have, which means the walls would be reinforced uh to a degree that someone could, you know, very easily. The door has to be reinforced with multiple touchpoints that go deep into the secured frame. The ceiling would have to be reinforced, so, and then it would have uh access controls on the outside to let you in and out. So it is very difficult to get in that vault. It would take someone a significant amount of time. But as I mentioned earlier, if someone would try to break in here after hours, they'd have to get through the reception door, which would be difficult. Then they'd have to get into the limited access area, restricted access area. We believe that the infrastructure we created would create such a difficult time to get back there. It would give the police time to respond as the burglar alarms would go off and motion detection.
Okay, and then one other thing, and I'm sure the board, having heard many of these cases, is aware that, you know, cannabis is one of the most tightly regulated products in the state of Illinois, and this industry is one of the most tightly regulated. But can you also talk about uh the inspections uh not only by Illinois State Police, but also by the Illinois Department of Professional Financial Regulation uh that occur here?
Absolutely. So the dispensaries that we work with, I would say, are uh have surprise visits by the I S P, which is the Illinois State Police, or the I D P F R on a monthly basis, where they come in unannounced, and they look for compliance with all the regulations. And it starts with, do our guards have all their certifications? Do the employees, are they following the protocols? They'll ask them their inventory policies, so it's a very rigorous inspection at least once a month. I should have also mentioned, Andrew, that we offer access to the cameras. It is required that the Illinois State Police have direct access into the cameras twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We also partner with the C P D to offer them access. Most of the time, they ask for it so that we give them a level of visibility into the, the facility whenever they want.
Okay, and so is it, you're, just as a general matter, is it your profession, in your professional experience, does, you know, sort of the level of security that is attended to a dispensary, uh, does it make neighborhoods more safe, less safe? What, what's your, if you could talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so I'm going to answer on two levels. You know, we do a hundred stores, we've been doing this for at least six, seven years. Our experience is actually makes the community safer, given that there are cameras on the outside of the building. Uh, and there is a presence of a security guard, we tend to be a deterrent in the neighborhood for crime. We have also uh always shared the camera footage with the local police department. So when crimes happen in the community that are in view of our cameras, we've been able to help the police solve those crimes. The security officer doing the uh perimeter sweeps would also um be a deterrent and is a presence. And then there are studies out there, um, there's two that I referenced, there's one by Jeffrey Brinkman and David Mock Laman. Both those guys were with the Federal Reserve Bank, and they did a study. Both those guys were with the Federal Reserve Bank and they did a study on the effects of dispensaries in the neighborhood. And it basically said that the results imply that an additional dispensary in a neighborhood leads to reduction. Of seventeen crimes per month per ten thousand residents. Which roughly corresponds to a nineteen percent decline relative to average crime rate over the sample period. Then Leafly, which is a uh third party, um, party to the cannabis industry, reviewed forty different key study. Forty-two different key studies. And found that the majority of them uh reduce crime in the neighborhood. At worst case, it stays flat. So there is no increase to crime.
Thank you. Um, and I'll just, you know, for the board, I'll offer anecdotally. Uh, I was actually before the board earlier this year for a dispensary at. Uh, Damon and Saint Paul, uh, which is opened in early November and, and I would just note, sort of following on what Dan was talking about, about sort of. Improve safety and the presence of everything and how, how it has a positive impact. Uh, I believe it was on December seventh at about six AM, uh, there was a armed robbery that occurred at the intersection of. North and Damon, just south of our dispensary. And in fact, uh, you know, my client, the owners of the dispensary just up the street. They were actively within the past few days, you know, sharing camera information with the CPD in an effort to identify. Uh, you know, the perpetrators of those crimes. So again, it's just. You know, it is only, I only offer that as kind of a demonstrative of how. These particular businesses can help in terms of public safety and addressing crime. Uh, not, you know, obviously it doesn't have anything to do with this specific location, but I only offer it as an anecdote as to how. Uh, you know, the, the level of security at one of these dispensaries uh can help with these things and help improve public safety. So, Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes our cha, our case in chief. Uh, you know, obviously I reserve the right to recall witnesses. And uh rebut any testimony that the uh, that the objectors may, may offer, but um. We're available to answer questions or however you want to proceed.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to see if there's any questions from the board at this time, and if not, we'll go to um the supporter. But any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have a few. Um, so. Break down the ownership for me again, once more, one more time, like.
So if the world of weed, who's the applicant, uh, Gregory Elliott, who's on with you right now, uh, fifty-one percent. Right, Lynn, forty-nine percent.
Okay, so, uh, does the applicant, um, a fifty-one percenter? Does he have an agreement uh to sell his interest in the dispensary? Could I ask him that, please?
Gregory Elliott. No, not at this time. My sole focus is on getting all six locations open.
Okay, so you have, you have no intention on selling at this, at this point, at this time?
Not at this time.
All right, very good. And um, are you also on the, are you also wanted to? Are you on the lease? Let me ask that question. Are you on the lease as well?
Yes, World of Weed is on the lease.
You are, okay, very good. Just wanted to ask those two questions. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, hearing none, we are going to go to uh the supporter, which uh was Nilda Esparza from the Logan Square Chamber of Commerce. Nilda, if you could um unmute. And then you've already been sworn in, so you just need to um. State your uh position on the matter. Did we lose her? She was just promoted and now she disappeared. Let's just give it a second to see if she rejoins, because she was just, she was just here. Ah, she's back.
So sorry, my connection, my goodness.
That's okay, that's all right. You've, you've, you've already been sworn in, so um. Feel free to uh state your position on the matter. Again, this is uh Nilda Esparza from the Logan Square Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, thank you so much, everybody, for your time. Um, so World of Weed Inc., you know, it is disappointing that you did not reach out to our office. If you are going to be opening up in six, seven different communities, I suggest you do reach out to your local. Logan Square Chamber, I'm sorry, uh, Chamber of Commerce or your development um corporation there in the community. There are seventy-seven communities, we all have them. Um, you know, we, like every other small business, has been navigating through pandemic fatigue. And one of the, one of those things is that, um, you know, we. Don't have the staff to constantly monitor these things, but one thing that we have done is stayed on top of our info email. We have serviced that email in the last two years consistently to ensure that we are answering every inquiry and we never once saw anything. From your institution looking to come to Logan Square. So that doesn't show good faith. That's just my suggestion for you when you go into the other communities. Uh, but collectively speaking, nevertheless, our Board of Directors are in support of this project. They are not in agreement that the cannabis dispensary business is an inherently unfavorable use. Um, the arguments presented for this particular location in terms of the traffic, there is a parking lot available. And so that is a luxury that most dispensaries don't have. Um, we have not seen any data that supports that operators such as this one contribute to crime and burglaries. Um, and so, you know, dispensaries being equipped with more security than most, we don't necessarily see this as a major issue. We have witnessed what has gone on with a Sun Mocha on Milwaukee there in Fullerton that has ignited. Um, foot traffic, um, it has uh made for a good pocket there of more businesses popping up in and around. And so we have been able to witness that in our community already. And then, you know, most of those developments in terms of us losing, losing a laundromat, there are um, uh. You know, uh, services provided by these new developments and buildings that do have this service. In the uh buildings there, there's also dry cleaners in the area. And so while we would like to see a social equity owner. Um, nevertheless, I think that, you know, the revenue that this could produce for the city to go into other programs for the city, specifically to help youth. And educate youth, um, I think would be, would be a good thing. And so that's where we stand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make two comments real quick?
Sure.
Um, first, Mrs. Barza, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and your, your comments about outreach are very well, very well taken. And, you know, assuming that we are approved here, we will absolutely immediately engage. I hope you understand that uh this, this process is very, very long. We started. In late February of twenty twenty-two and we're, we're just getting to a hearing now, so there's a lot of uncertainty around it. We have building permits to, you know, we have plans, final plans to draw building permits to get, and so. Uh, we're, we're almost kind of like midstream, but we, we will reach out. Um, and, you know, sort of have an opportunity to talk. And then I should also point out uh that you had said you, they had hoped for a social equity applicant. You have one.
Sorry, I was under the impression that it wasn't, forgive me.
Yes, no, Greg is a uh, they are a social equity applicant.
Got it, sorry about that. Um, I, I don't know how you missed reaching out to us. Can you just explain where the thought process was behind that? Because our universe is seven thousand emails strong, our, um. You know, we, we have a track record of bringing people to the community with our functions and our events, our reach is very, very uh far. And uh, we do have buy-in with the services that we provide, and so we could have had more than four folks at your public meeting for you. I just want to understand how you missed communicating to an office like ours when it's such a delicate issue.
Sure, your, your point is well taken. And as I said, I think that we were kind of focused on meeting with our immediate neighbors. Uh, sort of getting with them, getting them information, but your point is well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Toy. I second what she said. I always like to hear what the business uh community feels when you, when a. Business is moving into the community and also obviously what the neighbors and the neighborhood associations feel as well, as long as, and. The Alderman as well. Obviously, we have the Alderman and his office on right now. Obviously, you've reached out to neighbors, but it's always good to reach out to the neighborhood groups and the business group as we, as you move forward here. In the city of Chicago. So, thank you.
Absolutely appreciate the comment.
Yeah, and Mr. Scott, we can help you with uh recruitment as well. We have a pipeline. We do have a job board on our website. We definitely want to help identify folks. We want, you know, the local economy to stay strong and that these jobs do go to folks in our community. We have a pipeline of candidates ready for you. So please um, reach out to our office and make sure that your engagement officer reaches out to me.
It will be done.
Thank you.
Okay, um, at this time, we are going to turn to the objectors. Um, and we've got uh Douglas or, or Lupe, whichever one of you wants to start.
Um, I'll go first just because um, my, my neighbor Lupe has uh can finish up with a very important part. Now, I'll kind of do the. Do the initial uh, uh, steps of the compliance and so forth, and then I think Lupe will really make a great argument after that, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the board and, oh my God, I, I've got to know you guys because we've been on all day. So, nice to meet everybody. Um, you know, I, I'm a little disappointed, especially in the chamber and, and you'll see why I say that. And uh also, my wife and I went to that public meeting, which. You know, I've been enough to these, after living in Logan Square since nineteen seventy, um, when my parents moved out here. And what I find is that a lot of these community meetings that are, are, are organized to hear what the community says is actually the opposite. Uh, this meeting was closer to revolution. You know, most of our neighbors at work to make it in that evening would have been closer if they would have done it on Armageddon Avenue somewhere. You would have got a better turnout. So I, I disagree that the community was disengaged at that point. They just couldn't make it because it was so far away, you know, we, we don't live near Revolution Brewery. So, you know, that being said, um, and I did speak to the counselor on many other issues, which it's funny because none of the. None of the issues that I brought up, he brought up, but I will start uh and. And I'll tell you my presentation, please. So I grew up in Logan Square and I live at nineteen thirty-five North Kedzie since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, my neighbors and I, along with the Chicago Police Department, fourteen district. Fought to eliminate the Latin Kings and drug sales in the early two thousands. I shared that with, with the uh, with the security consultant also. Uh, the Federal Bureau of Investigation was also instrumental in the battle with Operation Bumblebee. Which incarcerated many of the individuals involved in a criminal enterprise. A cannabis dispensary would only harm individuals, I'm sorry, uh, a cannabis dispensary would only harm our community. And all, all the hard work it took to create the peaceful environment that our families, children and small businesses enjoy today. This is why we uh opposed a cannabis dispensary. Uh, so number two, the, is, is it in the interest of public convenience? And will it not have a, and will it have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community? Who's convenience? The residents of the area or the customers? This business does not provide convenience to the residents. Um, this is another area that, uh, you know, the, uh, the attorney forgot to bring up. Uh, the alley behind the business includes a T uh intersection. Any parking of vehicles in the alley, so where you have the, the building, the back of the building, buttresses. Our neighbors' garages, so they actually pull out of their garage straight into the back of that proposed building. And initially, the conversation was that they were going to do deliveries through the alley. But now it turned to, well, do the deliveries in the front, but only in emergencies, will we do, do deliveries in the alley? It's a very, very narrow, uh, narrow alley and you have all the homes uh that buttress them with families with small children. So that, that should have been brought up. Um, so any parking of vehicles in the alley will block alley traffic from north to south and east to west. Meaning residents who park in the alley cannot use their garages when the business's back door is in use. This creates a danger for those residents exiting and entering the garages. The increased vehicle and foot traffic in the alley from customers will create an unsafe environment for these families. We already experienced people drinking and smoking cannabis in this alley and the dispensary will only exacerbate, exacerbate that. Um, because the business is limited to cash and debit card sales, it is a target for burglaries or robberies. Now, I know that they brought the fact that it hasn't happened yet, uh, that we're aware of, but you do hear the increase in. Um, in smoke shops being robbed lately, the effect had been in the news in the, in the news in the last few weeks. Um, customers will take up parking spaces that residents will not be able to use on our side streets, Albany, Homer and Cortland. Now, twelve parking slots is not a lot. It, it's really not enough for the amount, you know. The, the assumptions being made that a lot of the usage will be from the, from the nearby communities. And what we did from going door to door, we've been doing this since our last meeting when we got the continuance. Uh, which uh Lupe Moreno will speak to. We've been flyering, speaking to people. Um, for example, Sonrisa Dentistry down the street, it was like, oh my God, this is not going to do anything for my business. I mean, everybody we spoke to was just like. This is not what we need in our community. Um, so uh, in the parking issue, we already have a parking issue because we do have bars and restaurants. We love them, we, we don't have a problem to this point, but increased traffic flow from the cannabis dispensary, that will become a problem. Um, three, is it compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design? The business did not add any value to the existing buildings as, as unfortunately was misstated and does not beautify the community. Um, the, it was never mentioned that a majority of our businesses on Armageddon Avenue, our restaurants, we love them, we support them. Um, insurance offices, uh dental clinics and doctors' offices, it's, it's very specific. Uh, there are no other type of businesses that would even be compatible with this or would improve because of the dispensary. Uh, the parking lot size will not support the number of customers. Uh, the business will bring people to the area whose sole purpose is to visit the business and not enjoy the other amenities of the neighborhood, like the restaurants and so forth. Um, cannabis is very expensive. After you, you've spent money on cannabis. I don't know how many people would still have more money to go have a dinner somewhere or so forth. That's probably not the intent why they're going to the can, uh, to the dispensary. Uh, four, is it compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics? Such as hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise and traffic generation. The business will bring increased traffic on Kedzie and Armageddon. Both streets are single lanes in each direction. Uh, the addition of bike lanes on Kedzie and Armageddon will not support the increased traffic. Vehicles turning into the business parking lot will have to cross the bike lane for right turns. And left turns will cross both the bike lane, the center line and uncommon traffic. Uh, neighboring businesses, which is, this is what the counselor just forgot to, for some odd reason to bring up that I brought up to him at the meeting. Neighboring businesses include WIC, Women and Infant Children Distribution Center, right across the street. My God, I, I, I'm surprised they forgot that. Walgreens Pharmacy that did mention, um, to the east, that, that building at Butcher's on the east end of the building is the Sinai Health Clinic. I spoke to um, the manager, Howard Corbin. Um, they have a lot of refugees that are being brought here from other states, which probably everybody heard. And one of the things he mentioned is that they're very, they're very fragile people. They're already stressed from coming here from Venezuela, other countries. We have a large Latino population that visits that clinic along with the laundromat, because it, not everybody has the amenity of washer and dryers where they live. So he was saying that he works late, but he feels very safe right now when he goes home at night, but his, what he's afraid is that that will change. With more traffic that comes to the dispensary. Um. Uh, these families are trying to receive healthcare services and food to, to thrive. And the increased foot and vehicle traffic will add additional stress. Is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. The armed guards on a premise do not fit the culture of the area. Logan Square is a history of drug, drug-related violence from the gangs that were prominent in the area until the federal string operate, uh, sting. Operation Bumblebee in early two thousand. Cannabis is not legal in all areas of the country because it's still considered a controlled substance. The cannabis dispensary will sell vaping and chewable products, and we already have an issue with the adjacent smoke shop on the southeast corner of Armageddon and Kedzie. That's where a lot of the, uh, the cannabis that is bought, uh, right now, when they bring it home, they buy these little packets of cigars. They put it in there and then they walk down Kedzie, Armageddon, and it's so, uh, so strong the odor that you can't miss it. So that's the traffic we get through the alley now, and uh, so just let's add the traffic to the dis, uh, dispensary. When they could also go to, to the smoke shop for other, uh. Uh, for other paraphernalia. Um. Oh, and, and for someone who speaks in healthcare, this, this is very important to me. Uh, the FDA has warned about cigarette smoking because of. Because of its correlation to lung cancer and cannabis and cannabis and vaping, because the same impact, has the same impact on a person's lungs. We have families with children visiting the WIC Center across the street from the proposed dispensary and the Sinai Medical Center adjacent to the dispensary. We already have people walking up and down the street smoking cannabis without a dispensary. Imagine the increased issues and a negative example it has in the youth of our community. The southeast corner of Armageddon and Kedzie also has increased foot and, and vehicle traffic because of the pawn shop. The zoning board approved in December twenty twenty. It certainly has not been positive foot traffic entry and exiting. The smoke shop or pawn shop or customers that will visit our restaurants and other small businesses. Uh, so this is why. Uh so this is why my neighbors and I oppose the dispensary. You know, we can't make a general statement that this fits in every community. What matters is the, you know, according to everybody else, what they focused on was, well, you know, the security, the the parking, uh you know, the parking lot and so forth. Nobody bothered to come and have an additional meeting if there wasn't enough people at the first meeting to say, hey, what do you people really think? What do you really think about this? Uh I I doubt that it would have been any different, but at least it it would have been more respectful to the community instead of saying, this is what we're gonna do. We wanna, we want this to be rubber stamped. And and you know, and I've been there for since nineteen seventy. I've owned a building where I lived for twenty years. And we fought hard, where I've had my windows broken many times because we were trying to get the gangs and the drugs out of the area. Where it's not that that's gonna go back to that, but that's not where we're at right now. Armagedge Avenue is a very quiet corridor. It it's it's a stretch to say it's a business corridor. We're getting there. Uh the restaurants have really been trying to get over the pandemic and catch up. And this is not gonna bring more revenue to them, especially when cannabis is so expensive. These are people that are gonna come, purchase it, go home. And you know what, I I we we see people using cannabis on the streets already. That'll just increase. This is not gonna do anything has someone said to property values, just the opposite. Uh the homes that back back into. Uh the dispensary are almost million dollar homes. These families definitely don't think that that's gonna really help their property values. And neither do I. So I that this is the reason why I oppose the cannabis dispenser, and we hope you do also. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh before we move on to uh to Lupe, uh do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, you know what, it it was kind of an interesting conversation we had uh with the counselor, uh you know, like he stated. Uh people didn't uh didn't, you know, we were waiting for people to come, so we were having, you know, small talk. And um you know, one of the comments that the counselor made, he lives in Andersonville. And he says, hey, we have a cannabis dispensary and it's really been great for the community. And I kept telling him, listen, this is. This is not cannabis dispensaries do not fit in every community. Our our part of Logan Square is a lot different than Milwaukee Avenue in Fullerton. We're very residential. We're uh you know, Gen X boomers. And uh you know, we like the businesses we have. This is not compatible. So I mentioned all this to him. So uh that he mentioned that I was very like, it was the gangs and all that. Yeah, I did mention that to him too, but it was also because we have. Nice families that come to the WIC office. Uh they're really not crazy about it. Uh because you know, they come there for food and so forth. Uh Walgreens is not crazy about it, the Sinai Medical Center. But no one went and spoke to these businesses. If if you noticed, every all the other businesses they talked about, not one of them mentioned those three businesses. So I'm very disappointed in the counselor in that.
Okay. Um. Let's move to uh Lupe.
Hello.
Hi Lupe, you've already been sworn in. Uh you can state your uh objection now.
How much time have you got? I I I seem to have seen something that says it could go up to eight.
Well, let me um let me, let me, let me, actually, that's it's that's a good question. Um let me say one thing. We don't need redundancy. To the extent that Douglas said something that you agree with, you can just state that, hey, I I agree with everything that Douglas said. And then um if you have something new to add, then please add that. But the point is, is we don't need everybody saying the same thing. Um as the board knows, we did have a a matter last uh month that went on for over, I think it was about four hours. Um and there was a lot of redundancy that we that we really don't need or or appreciate. So new things are good. Um if you agree with Douglas, you can say that. Um but yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Um first, um. My name, my last name, because I I I'm hearing different versions of it, is Marino. So it's like, I think the name of a football player with an O at the end. Yeah, and aside from that, then um. I agree with everything that Douglas has mentioned. I will expand on some of it. Um because uh first of all, I've been there for, I'm in my house now thirty-two years. So yes, I've seen very many changes. That's a long time. And um I also. Have a very different perspective, which comes from being a resident and among the residents and talking to them. And when I, as I was listening to uh the presentations of Attorney Scott. And the people that he brought in, one thing that stands out is that. All of their um. All of their suggestions, all of their interpretations are really based, if you will, on what you might call book learning. And not really actually experiencing some of what they're talking about. Um now, I, by the way, I do have a question for. Nilda Sparza, are you there? Nilda? She probably left.
I I think she has left the meeting. I don't see her anymore.
Well, I'm gonna say something then that I won't be able to um. Verify, but I don't think she knew about this till maybe this last week. So the, so again, it goes to the point I'm trying to make here is that. They're talking about perspectives that come from without. She mentioned how it will be good for the neighborhood, how it's this, how it's that now. But she didn't even know about this situation until maybe two weeks ago, and we had never heard anything from her. So again, the their perspective is um that it's a good client. We want to make an investment. They want to make money. Um and um all the reasons why they think it's gonna be good for us. Our experience here is that um first of all, it's very difficult to even. Give opinions about such situations because this community, and I'm not, we're not alone in this. This community is still very much working class. Although it's very beautifully diversifying because we have everything going on now. We have very low income up to very nice, healthy income. And I'm talking about our little patch, the two hundred and fifty feet within the area of the laundromat. Um many of the people, many, many, and I couldn't. I did not send it because um the the paperwork that I have that would prove what I'm saying in terms of, for example, the age. Uh range of the people here also would have been providing a lot of very personal information, and I didn't think that was fair. I don't have the right to be spreading people's personal information about. Because I have the, as a Realtor, I'm able to get online and get a lot of information that other people can't. And um. So I am shocked, but I will tell you that something like forty-five percent of the people that qualified. To state an opinion on this particular case. Are more than fifty, fifty-five years old. They're not gonna be getting high on the level that maybe some other people might in different areas. And I, and it takes me to the conversation I had with um Attorney Scott. When we talked on the phone a while back, and he had, they were just opening up ID, which is the um dispensary that they have. Just opened at Damon and St. Paul. That came about because when I was talking about the, when I, when he was telling me how this area is not. Especially different than the other areas that they have put dispensaries in, I was absolutely flabbergasted. Again, because I've been a Realtor and I've been a Realtor for about thirty years. Um it's significant. When you're comparing a neighbor, one neighborhood to another, that it'd be more that, oh gee, they have the same number of buildings or that they have this or that. But I was flabbergasted that our laundromat here area should be compared. To um. What is Damon and St. Paul and another dispensary that they have, I believe, on the nineteen hundred block of Damon. Those are incredibly intensely busy areas. Um ours is not a commercial. Area such as um one of the fellows that spoke earlier and talked about um the study that he did. And whether or not this is a commercial zone. This is not a commercial zone. Technically, this is a business zone, and it has one or two steezoned properties. The laundromat being one of them. That does not a commercial zone make. Um and then over at um at the Ivy at St. Paul and Damon. The very buildings that they're up against behind them. Some of the buildings there will have at least forty units. So I would say that, yes, their density and tall buildings might be a little higher than the. The little bit of on Homer Street, which you can see even on the um photograph that you have up here. And that shows all of five houses. On it and their single families, like uh except for one that has two little flats. There is no comparing. So again, I think that on paper. I think the people that are the investors and the people that are guiding them. And uh the uh specialists that they have talking to them are working off of um. In the business, we call it, they're working off of a plan. But that doesn't mean that that really differentiates. To how one neighborhood can be so very different than the other. And that's really at the heart of all this for me. I don't, I do not oppose marijuana. I oppose this building being here and what uh number one, some of the opportunity we will very well lose. Because this area, if if we. If if the realtors, that's Collier Company, who represents the building for the landlord. Was maybe doing a little bit better job. They would be trying to cultivate people to come in here that have things that we don't have and desperately need. We're a bit of a food desert, for one thing. And but we're gonna have cannabis instead, which I, excuse me, but there's a humor in that. If you're a child of the sixties and seventies like I am. You know, the one thing that cannabis does for you is give you the munchies. Yeah, but here you're not gonna have anywhere to go eat because going to eat at Giant is extremely expensive. And they don't, I'm sure they don't want high people rolling in there to eat. Um so there's that. And the. Other thing that really was impressed upon me today and almost overwhelms me more than all I learned about walking around my little neighborhood. Because I've been walking this whole neighborhood for a week and a half now, is how we are talking about the convenience to. The dispensary, the upside for the owners, all the people that they engaged to make their presentations. Um the fact that they have an attorney. Um the people that I've been talking to, when I ask them, when you got the card about the dispensary. Why didn't you not go or why didn't you call? A lot of these people. Don't use English as their first language yet. They can speak English, but when they get a little card. Uh and I'm sure you've seen it. Um I just had it right here in the mail with the the, where where am I? With the itty bitty um it, well, it's this little postcard with these tiny letters. And they basically, it just tells you, the board wants to do this. And uh this is what we're doing, and we're doing this. Uh this is such small print. Now, that's not their fault. I think the city maybe has to review how they actually give fair notice to people. About these things and what they mean when they get it, not just this. Because this is what a lot of these older people do. They just, you know, okay, right, whatever. Um the lady with the commerce, why isn't she in the area saying, well, this is why this may be good for you or not be good for you? Because she wasn't aware, because they do not live in our two hundred and fifty feet distance from this building. Community. And um it just goes on and on. I have people who have children who have trouble with marijuana. And they're very open about it, and they want the last thing they need. And these are the people that are most likely not going to have maybe a. A college education and so on and so forth. And these are the people that may be going to the dispensary, even though it's really very frightful. To their parents. I wish we could have interviews with all of them. But um on a more um. The package I sent down, just, I did send back the backup with my packages to how this area compares to, for example. The one that was brought up by Mr. Scott, because he he brought it up. And um also, I have a list. Of just part of one building that's included in here. Of the people that live around that area, the kind of community it is. Uh. Fact that that's what we in the industry call, it's a destination. Bucktown, Wicker Park, we are not. Nobody says, wow, it's a destination. We're all going into. We're going into the south side of Logan Square, where our houses are significantly more modest. Than when you get into some of the uh nicer sections of of town of uh Logan Square. The fact that a sixty-two hundred, sixty-two to sixty-five hundred square feet, depending on whose literature you're looking at. Huge building is going to be leased for at least ten years with two five-year options. Is amazing for weed because it's serving, when you think about it as like a pie. You're only serving people of a certain age on up with one goal. And that seems like an awful lot for those of us who live here to have to. Put up with for that number of people that simply want to do something recreational. Um that that, you know, it's 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 just uh, that's me. I gave, I sent in uh a copy of a form that shows, and I got this from the City of Chicago. Uh website that uh the vehicles per day right now, right here where they want to put that up. Is eighteen thousand two hundred per day. We have horrible traffic in this area because. Just the development, uh so many more buildings or condominiums, uh mostly that. But then uh also because they're going from here perhaps to the north side of the Logan Square area. And I think in the brochure that they had, now I had asked Mr. Scott if he could give me another copy of his brochure, but. He was not in a giving mood that, and um so. There is on one form, the where it states that they're they're um understating. The vehicles per day, they have something like twelve or thirteen hundred per day. In fact, it's eighteen hun- eighteen thousand two hundred per day. So yeah, they think they're saying it's twelve thousand or thirteen hundred. It's eighteen thousand two hundred. Um now, we are not trying to keep the owner of. The laundromat from doing the very best he can for himself. I'm sure that he works as hard as any of us here. However, uh again, if maybe he had a better um real estate service, they could have. Brought him optional people to consider to rent the space to, but it's um it's a huge space. And even though their schematic shows that the area that's going to be used for the cannabis. The uh dispensary is only half. They're actually leasing the entire building. So there is no real hope that maybe one half of that will ever be, God forbid, a coffee shop. Because I have a neighbor who looks for uh runs walks every day religiously to walk four or five blocks to get a cup of coffee. And um it may sound simple, but that's really what it is. Because we don't even have coffee shops or anything like that that opened earlier for us. Everything is geared towards people who don't live here. People who come in to eat dinner at an expensive place, people who come to drink. It gets so much to be an issue that we actually have a moratorium, and that's included in the paperwork that I sent. Um that there is a moratorium here on liquor licenses, because when I first moved here. I think there were three, maybe four, and the alderman at the time. I think there were three, maybe four, and um, the alderman at the time, um. He was one of our representatives. What is his name? Luis Gutierrez, Luis Gutierrez. He even took one away from someone because I don't know what he wanted.
Hey, Lupe, I didn't, uh, Lupe, I didn't mean to interrupt, but can you share how many petition signatures you were able to get and some of the comments that you heard?
Yes, yes, but I'm getting to this point about how uh, we went from the the liquor licenses being three to the point where we have to have a moratorium because again, we're we're like a service center for people outside the community to come and get uh, to drink and now it's going to be to come and get high. Um, so yes, the comments that from the people were um, and how do you document that? The comments by the people were that absolutely not, this is not something they consider, something that they want here. This is not something that they feel is gonna help them in any way. And again, this is cutting across the board from the people that are very modest here to the people who um, clearly have very comfortable lifestyles. Um, and of all the people I spoke to, only three, maybe four said that they were not opposed. And I went on every street that could be included in this study. Now, um. As far as a homeowner, you know, it's okay if our values don't go up anymore because our real estate taxes are sky high. Again, these are very modest people. Some of these are the same owners that came in twenty, thirty years ago too. And I don't think their incomes have gone up sufficiently. That now they say, my gosh, I have this little house here and I'm gonna, oh, goody, I'm gonna pay nine, I'm paying nine thousand. There was a man I spoke to like that, little single family house inherited from his father. He's saying next go around, he's afraid of what it will be because it's nine thousand now. And it's just um, so we feel like we are giving to the community. We pay taxes here.
Lupe, I I I do wanna make sure that you stay focused. We have, we have
No, I'm sorry.
Use criteria and I feel like we're getting away from
Okay.
Criteria for, this is zoning for cannabis. So.
I know, but I will say that I understand that you have this criteria, but I'm not sure that it really kicks into consideration many, many things. Okay, so um.
But that is, this, this is the, the, this, the criteria is how we make our decision. That is the zoning ordinance and we must follow it.
Okay, is in the interest of public convenience. Um, and again, it goes right back to what my friend Willie Douglas said, who's convenience. And is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. I think we've heard from us on more than one point. This is not compatible. This is not compatible at all. Um, and is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation. Outdoor lighting, noise and traffic generation. Again, um. Most everything is closed down here fairly early and it opens up late, so it's not even boutiquey like. This is gonna be this juggernaut that's gonna be going very long hours every day of the year. And um, I do, and excuse me, um. But I do, is there any, is there any benefit to my talking about the fact that many of the reasons that these people signed this petition were not because they were necessarily against the cannabis, most of them were. But they also are very sad that we don't have something that's going to benefit our neighborhood.
Yeah, let me just say this, uh, I I I need you to speak about personal knowledge and 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 the problem with what you're saying is that you're talking about. It's it's what we call hearsay. You're talking about what somebody else said. And that, you know, I need, you know, you can talk about your personal knowledge, but to say that somebody else thinks something, it's it's really not appropriate.
No, I understand that Commissioner, but most of what Douglas said is absolutely true. I think the thing that's very true is that um, the petition that I have tells you what the people here feel. And it's talking about how um, one other criteria is um, that let's see, is compatible. Interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the wealth, general welfare of the neighborhood. That goes back to what I was saying. It it impacts us that um. Something's coming in that's really of very little service to anyone who lives here. And if that's not a key consideration, then I'm not sure why there is the whole rule of the two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, people giving a vote. Because then if you take that into consideration, I think it's fairly clear that for the most part, people that are here are opposed to it and they don't feel that it's going to be um, either convenient for them or um, have a positive impact on their general welfare. And that's your criteria number two. Um, it's not compatible with the surrounding area again because this will be the first of its kind and we don't even know, because right now they're opening dispensaries throughout the city, far and wide, willy-nilly. We don't even really know what the effects are going to be in any particular place. And that's what we're also afraid of. We're, we're like, well, it sounds like a great idea now, but what do we really know about it? And again, the fact that it's got this twenty-year lease, my gosh. Um, there's never gonna be any hope for us to um, get around the fact that we have a, an industry that is really only servicing a very narrow, 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 narrow part of our community. Very narrow. So there's, that for the most part is what I have to say. Um, I did send the package in. Um. I think that our our neighbors have spoken and the only other thing that um. I do wanna say that it's not part of the criteria and then I'm gonna go, uh, is that the only it's in the package, the only dispensary that was denied. Um, was rejected a special permit was at twelve West Maplewood. And that is a community that said the same things we're saying now. And they won, but they had an attorney, they had a management company. And we don't have that at our disposal. And I think that that really um. I think that that feels a lot like, well, you know, if we don't have the money to defend ourselves professionally, then we're, we're gonna be voiceless. And uh, one more thing, um, that uh, Mr. Scott in his conversation and and everyone, other people too in his group are saying that it's going to be really, really, really um, good for them in every way. It's in their best interest. But it's our interest that we're here today to decide that we're going to take into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, do you have, before you, before you go, do you have any uh, questions for the applicant?
No, I asked him questions. Um, and basically he said what he said today. And it's, it's sounds very much like a cookie cutter thing. Here are all the reasons why it's a good deal. And uh, and I asked him too, because I noticed somewhere, I can't remember about the rules, that one thing that could be um, that could, could have um, happened was that if someone approached the owner of the property, um, that he could have backed out. Well, and and I, so I brought that up to Mr. Scott and I said, well, would you consider going somewhere else? We can talk to the owner and he said, no, and the reason was that we've, we've invested to, we've invested too much money. And so for that, since he brought that up, I will say we've invested a pretty hefty amount ourselves over the course of thirty to forty years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, we are now uh, going back to the applicant. Before we get to rebuttal and closing, does the applicant have any questions for the objectors? You have the opportunity to ask questions of the objectors if you want. If not, we will then turn to just rebuttal and closing.
I I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. I I would like to address some of the points. I'm not gonna go point by point, but some of the more salient items I'd like to, like to address.
Okay, so we are now, uh, just so the record's clear, we're, we're, we are now done with the objectors. We are moving back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, I I appreciate your comment earlier about the use of hearsay and while I don't wanna get, you know, too technically legal, you know, it did give me a little bit of concern. Uh, when Mr. Williams is talking about conversations he had with other people. And you know, really, I I I hope that the board sort of understands from what you have articulated, which is you know, unless those folks are here to to say it for themselves, it it's kinda hard to, you know.
Counselor, you stated that what I didn't say. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, excuse me, uh, this is not the this is not the time now for the objectors to speak. The the objectors have had their turn and now we are just, we are in rebuttal and closing now. Um, I, we have a process here, um, and we are going to follow it. Um, so this, the, the applicant gets the last word, that that is how this process works. Um, so we are in rebuttal and closing and to your point, uh, uh, Mr. Scott. Uh, we do understand uh, what is hearsay uh, and 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 what is not. And so your, your, your point is heard.
Okay, a- and I would just extend it to, uh, you know, I I know that there are, you know, folks that signed a petition. We don't know what was said about our business. We don't know sort of the context of it. So again, similar weight to uh, to that particular item. I I do wanna talk a little bit about, uh, you know, Mr. Williams' comment, uh, you know, complaining about the location of the community meeting. And so a couple of points, we try, we we thought that there was gonna be larger participation. And so we were looking for a larger venue that could accommodate forty to fifty people. And truth be told, in the area, there were not spaces along Armitage Avenue that could that had kind of a segregated area that could handle all those folks. And at the same time, when I say segregated, meaning it was a separate room where we weren't sort of competing with diners or something like that. There are a number of churches around the corner. They didn't wanna house a cannabis community meeting, so we had it, you know, where we did on Milwaukee Avenue. But for that very reason, that's why we did the virtual meeting. Is so that folks that couldn't make it to that location, even though it was, you know, within a mile of the, of the subject property. So that people could participate. So I just wanted to make that point clear. I also wanna talk about sort of the, you, you know, Mr. Williams had said, you know, who's convenience, it's not convenient to the residents. And actually, you know, one of the reasons that this is an attractive location is that there aren't other dispensaries in the immediate area. And I think it was either Mr. Williams or Ms. Marino that had said that, you know, it's very much a changing demographic. You've got some older folks, you got you know, it's kind of an area in transition. You've got newer folks moving to the neighborhood. And you know, truthfully, a, a large part of, you know, cannabis customers are age fifty and older. Uh, I mean, it's certainly popular with the younger generation, but I think Ms. Marino was referring back to the sixties. And that's actually a, you know, a big constituency for uh, for dispensaries. And so that's why, you know, this seemed to be an area that was, you know, good to serve because there weren't any other in the area. Um, parking, I think we talked about, but it's always a big, big issue with businesses. Um, you know, we've got twelve parking spaces. There's on-street parking. Frankly, the turnover of customers at a dispensary, uh, really twelve is more than enough. It, this, the site will be well-served. Uh, so we really don't think we're, nobody's gonna be parking on, uh, sort of taking up uh, residential areas. In terms of the traffic, you know, Mr. Williams mentioned the movements and the danger that's gonna create. Truth be told, that's a condition whether or not we go there, whether or not the laundromat stays there or uh, you know, some other use comes in. And so uh, we believe we've got a safe environment for, to be able to handle traffic movement. So I really don't think uh, that's an issue. Um, and we also talked about Armitage and I'm gonna sort of lead into my comparison uh, to kind of the Buck Town Wicker Park area. But um, you know, we've heard that, you know, Armitage is a, it's a quiet, it's a quiet street, not very busy street, but Ms. Marino says over eighteen thousand. Um, you know, vehicular movements a day. I would only point out that in the materials that she provided to you, it is indeed correct that C dot shows eighteen thousand two hundred vehicular movements on Armitage. Um, at the intersection of Kenzie. But what I don't think Ms. Marino did is sort of went the extra mile to look at when that traffic count was done. And it was actually done in two thousand and six. And so I would submit to the board that there are very, very different conditions in the area than perhaps there were uh, fifteen, sixteen years ago. Um, I I guess I take a little bit of umbrage with, you know, saying that this is all based on book learning. I mean, we've got professionals. We've got people that know how to operate a dispensary safely, efficiently, uh, in accordance with the all regulations. Dan and his team, uh, you heard him talk about his brother, who was a federal marshal, actually involved in some of the gang activity, uh, cleaning up the gang activity in the neighborhood. Uh, this, you know, these folks have practical experience. This, this is not just sort of learning on the fly. Um, and then I just wanna talk really quickly about, you know. Give you the context of my comparison to Damon Avenue. The, my only point. I I I've, I've lived in Chicago for thirty years. I know the neighborhoods. I'm a zoning lawyer. I go all over the city. And I know the difference between Logan Square, North Logan Square, South Logan Square and Wicker Park. My only point in bringing, you know, talking about Wicker Park and the dispensary there, and I I should point out that's a completely different dispensary operator than the one here. My only point there was to say it's roughly the same size dispensary with the roughly the same kind of products. And there is, there is no parking uh, at that particular dispensary. And yes, there are, you know, there's kind of more density uh, in some of the buildings. But truth be told, you go to the northwest and you go across Damon and it's single-family homes just like here. And so that was my only point. In trying to say, you know, the, the neighborhood there can absorb and uh, you know, can support a dispensary. And why similarly here, I thought it was a comparable condition. She disagrees and, and that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. But I think at the end of the day, you know, between, you know, the testimony of Mr. Pulos and, you know, provide, you know, his comps for dispensary thirty-three up in Andersonville and showing that property taxes continue to rise, even though dispensary thirty-three has been there, you know, back to twenty sixteen, uh, when it was a medical dispensary and then in twenty twenty, when it uh, converted over to uh, also recreational and the property values continued to go up there. I think you heard Mr. Rack's testimony about uh, you know, how it all meets the, the standards. You know, we're compliant with the zoning ordinance. We uh, you know, we're bringing the, the parking lot up to code. Uh, you heard Greg talk about why it's necessary for the public convenience. Uh, just in terms of, you know, the ease of access, safe location, you know, multiple points of access between bus, car. Uh, walking uh, the Bloomingdale Trail. Uh, and then you also heard about the safety uh, that's associated that um. That Dan and his team would bring to it in terms of hopefully making it a safer environment in the area, more eyes on the street. Sort of a little bit more foot traffic, which we think improves the uh, you know, sort of the safety of a neighborhood. So in some, uh, you know, we, we've obviously submitted our reports and we've submitted the affidavits of testimony. We think we fully meet all of the standards for our special use at this location.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions by the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Toy. I just wanna, heard a lot today. And I just wanna make sure everyone understands when it comes to a special use. Uh, how does it affect the neighborhood? We heard that from both sides. We'll make our decisions. And will the operator have control? I went deep on if the operator have control and I, and and I, I got that question answered. So once again, it's a special use. It can be taken away at one time. So, you know, I just wanna go back to you, Lupe. It can be taken away. It is a special use. So the city has the right to do that. If if they're, you know, breaking the laws or anything like that. But again, how does it affect the neighborhood and will the operator have control? That's what a special use is about. So, thank you.
Okay, and then um, Nick from the Alderman's office, uh, do you, uh, do you have anything to say? Uh, before we take this under advisement?
No, Chairman, um, all I, all I would say is I would just like to affirm into the record the letter from Alderman LoSpata and the exhibits. I believe we submitted exhibits demonstrating our, our portion of how we helped outreach with the community process. Exhibits of uh, letters in favor and opposition. And uh, then the Alderman's letter itself, I would like to affirm each of those for the record. And uh, I will defer since my boss still, I believe I still saw my boss on the call. I will defer I will defer to, or he might have dropped. So yeah, I, yeah, I will, I will leave it at that then. I, I, you've absolutely heard everything we've been hearing. So I'll just affirm our, our exhibits for the record.
And we do have those exhibits in the record. I want to thank everybody for their time in putting forth the case and their objections today. We do appreciate the, 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 the robust discussion that we had on this one. We are going to take this matter under advisement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in closed session. Okay. I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The manners, the matters are continued as stated. I move to approve application for calendar numbers four seventy-five dash twenty-two dash Z and four seventy-six dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers four seventy-seven dash twenty-two dash Z and four seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighty dash twenty-two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighty-one dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighty-two dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighty-three dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighty-four dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four thirty-two dash twenty-two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
No.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar numbers one eighty-eight dash twenty-two dash S, one eighty-nine dash twenty-two dash Z, one ninety dash twenty-two dash Z, three fifty-eight dash twenty-two dash S, and three sixty-five dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The written resolutions are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the vote. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's November eighteen, twenty twenty-two regular meeting, with the exception of board calendar numbers two ninety-four dash twenty-two dash S, four oh four dash twenty-two dash Z, and four oh five dash twenty-two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The written resolutions are approved. I move to destroy the verbatim records for all closed meetings of the board from August twenty-one, twenty twenty through April sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The verbatim records will be destroyed. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes, and happy holidays, everybody.
I vote yes. The meeting is adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody, and we will see you next year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.